All right, we're going to call to order the July 16th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and the Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by our colleague, Councilmember Johanneson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our, and the successor agency met with our, conferred with our real property negotiator regarding the Stone Lock property, negotiated with the Sacramento-Yolo Port District. And the council met with, the council met to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with Local 522, the West Sacramento Firefighters Association. No action was taken, no final action was taken on either of those items. So now we'll proceed to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the council is prohibited from, by state law, from taking action or having a discussion on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum on items that are in our jurisdiction. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards. It's available near the front door, that someone's filling out right now. And then turn that card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard. And to that end, we ask that all the comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We take the cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on an agenda item. So let's say you're here for agenda item 18. The staff, once the staff person who makes the initial presentation on that item has concluded, his or her report, we don't take any additional speaker cards. So once the council questions or the public testimony's begun, there are no more speaker cards. So if you're here to speak on a specific item, the sooner you get the card in, the better, but for sure by the end of this, the conclusion of the staff report. We also know that for some folks, speaking in public can cause some anxiety and they're just not used to it. And so we try to create a civil discourse in our chambers, and so we ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or actually any other applause or other demonstrations, and try to make a comfortable environment for your fellow citizens to be able to engage in a democratic process. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and we use, that flip chart simply indicates which agenda item we're currently on. So it currently demonstrates, it currently shows the number one, because we're currently considering item 1A, B, and C. All right, with that, we have a couple of requests to speak on items that are not on the agenda, and the first is by Kim McDonald.
Mr. Mayor, you've gone on TV saying that the city offered me fair market value for my house on South River Road. It's true, but untrue. The people that you have hired have a very different definition of fair market value than most people. My home, okay, I asked to be bought out as soon as possible, as soon as I got the news that my house was going to be demolished, so I could begin looking for a new home and move on with my life. That fall, the city's representative said she would fast-track me and my home would be appraised the next February. That was five years ago. And each year since, I have been given an agenda that says the project will be starting in the next year. I began looking for homes in the area, but there was no way to buy another home because the project has put my home in a financial purgatory. All that I ask is to be given a reasonable price and not to drag this out any longer. The appraiser only has to measure livable space. To put this in view, say you have two identical houses side by side. One has a four-car garage attached, one does not. The appraiser calls them the same value. My downstairs has 13-foot ceilings. That's not considered anything but eight-foot ceilings. My second, my three-story home is framed with steel I-beams, four-by-12 solid wood joists, and two-by-six interior walls. The second-floor living room starts with 13-foot ceilings and soars to 25-foot with solid exposed reclaimed beams. There are two fireplaces that measure five-by-three, tens of thousands of used bricks from the old state fairgrounds, and the oak staircase came from the old Oroville courthouse. Each bedroom has its own bath and walk-in closet. There are two complete kitchens and three independent heating and air units. Your appraiser called this average construction and said the reclaimed materials reduce rather than increase the property value. My home sits on three acres of riverfront property. The foundation raises the second story to four feet above levee height. Views aren't included in the value of my home. Unimproved property that is not riverfront has sold for $100,000 an acre, and the city has paid $200,000 an acre for the high school. The city has offered me $50,000 an acre. And if I want to retain one acre, I have to pay $78,000. That math does not make sense to me. How can it be worth $50,000? But if I keep it, it's worth $78,000. Because South River Road will not be rebuilt, the city wants to replace accidents with private drives.
Ms. McDonald, I do, Ms. McDonald, I do have to ask you to come to a conclusion.
Yeah, I'm going to have to pay for my private drive, too.
Ms. McDonald, a few materials, they go to the clerk.
Mr. Kristof knows all this stuff already.
Yes, I know. All right, thank you. Pat Flint? I think I described the rules of the chamber earlier, so this is a difficult item that's been brought forward, so definitely an understanding for it. But we do have, as a matter of customary practice in the chambers, there are no demonstrations, either boos or applause, and we don't want to have to clear the chamber, so please try to maintain a civil discourse here. Ms. Flint, welcome.
Thank you. Senate council members, I so did not want to be here tonight, but I looked at this agenda, and it's ludicrous. There are way too many items on this agenda that affect the public. The consent agenda has 16 items, many of which affect the public safety and the tax base of citizens of West Sacramento. I can't believe council members, many of which have full-time jobs, let alone the busy people that you represent, have had the time to read the fine print of these agenda items. I am sure that this was the plan. The time-set agenda has seven items, seven public hearing items. The regular agenda has two public workshop items. Each person willing to come before you, and as you often mention at the beginning of every meeting, people are not comfortable speaking in front of you. These public hearings and workshops are for the public to speak. However, there will be no dialogue nor interactions with the public and the city council. No answers to their questions. There is no guarantee that you will even remotely consider public concerns or input. So my point is, you are already conducting business as if you were a charter city, which the ramifications are detrimental to the citizens of this city, the citizens you supposedly represent and protect. I am proposing that you pull at least half of these items to another meeting, as it's going to take you until midnight to get through them with some of the questions that I have. Hopefully, you will listen and implement what the citizens want for their future, not what your own personal goals are for your own personal gain. You are supposed to represent us. We are a democracy. I personally have questions on most of the items on this agenda. I will be speaking and asking questions on those I feel are important to me and to those that will impact public safety and the tax base of this city. And I have a few more minutes that, the next time I come before the city council, I hope I come with a more positive attitude. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, those are our only requests under item 1A. As we get to the consent agenda, just to point out, the consent agenda is also open for all public comment. The fact that it's on consent is not in any way preclude. So if you're here and you're interested in an item that is on the consent agenda, which we take up as a block in general, the speaker cards are absolutely accepted and welcome for those as well. And with respect to the property issue, because it is one that has been, it's a deep concern to community-wide, this is part of a massive flood protection project that the city's undertaking as a result of the changes both in engineering standards and in the risk that has been identified after Hurricane Katrina to levee systems across the country. It is our most, the most important levee project that the city has ever undertaken, and as part of over half a billion-dollar project that the federal government is, and the state government are key partners with us, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in co-managing several of these projects. And we, the city and the corps and our partners have looked at a variety of alternatives to the overall project itself, and many of the neighbors have worked closely with us trying to figure out alternatives to the project that would save as many of these homes on the waterfront as possible. And it's for, and the minimum number have been dealt with, but it is still, these are still our neighbors, our family members, our friends. And so the process of these, of this federal project has been tremendously wrenching. It is a property appraisal and negotiation process that has to proceed to its, through its normal course and conclusion. The council's not been involved in any way in those. We don't, we don't manage those projects at the council level. But I know that our staff and the staff of the Joint Powers Authority, the West Sacramento Flood Control Agency, of which we are a member, has clear understandings and expressions of our policy with respect to the fair and appropriate treatment of those properties and the property owners, because that is important to us. We don't have the legal authority to simply make offers and purchase acquisition agreements that are not related to an appraisal. You know, the laws about how the use of taxpayer funds don't allow that. So we have to proceed according to regular rules of real estate, but within those boundaries. I think we've given a clear direction, both here and through the JPA that Mr. Kristof represents us at, that we want to make sure that our citizens who have been cooperating with this project, you know, at every step to try to figure out how to make a solution work, get treated fairly. So we will hope that our, that our city manager and our staff proceed in that regard. All right, so that brings us into item 1B, which is council communications. Are there reports or are there communications this evening? Ms. Johanneson?
Yeah, just quickly, your colleague, Management District, met on July 8th, and the only item of significance was the review of particular season. And this is a measurement of the small micro particles that are basically cause heart problems and asthma and issues like that. And basically, 24, 2014, 2015, we had eight regional exceedance days and zero unhealthy days. And a lot of those exceedance days are caused by factors that are out of our control, such as forest fires and things of that nature. So, and that was, that was it.
Thank you, Ms. Johanneson. Ms. Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Port Commission met earlier tonight, and in closed session, we held a conference with our real property negotiator concerning two properties, including the Stone Lock property. And no action was taken. We also approved a contract for professional services related to the port storm water and groundwater treatment systems. And then earlier today, the Universal Preschool for West Sacramento's Executive Board met. We welcomed our new community member, Leah Miller, to the board, and we heard from Director Jimenez about the contributions of our program's city intern, Jasper Laca. We also learned that the Up For West Sac programs are now full year-round rather than having seasonal ebbs and flows, and we heard about the extensive staff training in which the staff has participated over the past several months. We also made a commitment as a board to work together to broaden our vision and to seek more external funding to boost access to our programs. Currently, 50 families are on the waiting list at Learning Ladder. While there is work being done to redirect and assist those families now, there's a clear demand to develop and increase the programs for the future. Finally, an item will be coming to council at our next meeting. Our board approved putting forward a letter of intent to request a new round of funding through First Five California to prepare an asset map of services and partnering opportunities in West Sacramento and Yolo County. And Yolo First Five is stepping aside as an administrator to allow us to put the grant application directly. And that, thanks, that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, last month, the West Sacramento area flood control JPA met, and it's really sort of the same story. We are in the process of negotiating with property owners to see if we can reach agreements and get use of that property so that we can put in the setback levees and the various flood control features that we need to, so that we can protect the 52,000 or 50,000 people that are residing in West Sacramento.
All right, thank you. So we're district area?
No, so we're.
Okay. All right, I have a few. The Oversight Board for the Redevelopment Successor Agency met last week. We only had one significant item, and the council's already aware of it. It deals with the Stone Lock property that we'll have up later, so no other, another action from that. The United States Secretary of Transportation, Anthony Fox, was in the, came to the SECOD two weeks ago to meet with the region, and we had the opportunity to make a presentation on behalf of West Sacramento and then also the regional sustainable use strategy. It was a very productive visit. He got a good exposure to the region's priorities and also our proposal, proposed agenda to have the federal government direct more of its transportation dollars directly to cities and to regions, as opposed to through state agencies, the state like Caltrans. The secretary's very, the secretary's the former mayor of Charlotte and is very, completely agrees with that position. He had, he was an advocate for that when he was the mayor there, but it would make, it would make a big difference in terms of our ability to advance some of our major local and regional projects. So that was a productive, productive visit on his behalf. The, I want to thank Mr. Johanneson. We did the, we hosted the regional summit on livable, age-friendly livable communities here at Rayleigh Field on behalf of the entire Sacramento region. And at that time, we also signed the agreement, adding West Sacramento as the second city in California, following San Francisco and ahead of LA and San Diego, to join the AARP National Network of Age-Friendly Communities, which is also part of the WHO, the World Health Organization's international global network of age-friendly communities. And we had great participation from around the region and particularly from our own commissions. A lot of volunteer commissioners on the variety of city commissions came to participate to figure out, to start, and our city's department directors as well, to look at, to start the work of examining our transportation policies, our road policies, our sidewalk policies, our housing policies, and our economic development and parks policies around how we are making West Sacramento a leader in the region and in the country for designing a city that is really a great place to aging and to move into kind of a 21st century view about what aging is about and how, what this, what opportunities the city has to, in addition to having a great senior center, but also thinking about just, what does all housing look like in the city and how do, how are we designing mobility and transportation? So it was, Mr. Johanneson was there all day long. He and Ms. Sandin are going to be leading this effort with the council and these several commissions that are, that are doing this work and our, and our department directors, but it was really great to see West Sacramento acknowledged by AARP nationally for both what we've done previously, but also our new initiatives in this domain. And a lot of good ideas are going to emerge from that process. So we've signed that agreement. We're going to begin now the multi-year process of scoping and planning and community engagement and then implementation of what will be some of the best, the best work in the country on that work. So thanks, Ms. Johanneson, for being a part of it, and to you and Ms. Sandin for agreeing to take the reins of that project. Also, in the legislature, SB 533, the bill by Senator Pan that he introduced at our request to prohibit the kind of sales tax hijacking that we experienced here in the, in last year when a city that we're in Southern California, basically under cover of darkness, convinced one of our local companies to transfer all of their, this sales tax revenue that we were receiving to that city. And then that city agreed to rebate it to the company that was based in Florida. So they essentially took $500,000 or $600,000 of our tax revenues and sent it off to the company's headquarters in Florida as part of that deal. And the other city in Southern California kept the remainder. So I testified at the legislature in the Senate when it was passed, and then in the Assembly, it's been assigned to several committees. They passed out of the Assembly Local Government Committee two weeks ago, I think unanimously or close. It was up in the Assembly Revenue and Taxation Committee yesterday, and it also passed out of committee. It will go next to the Assembly Appropriations Committee. So that bill's making very good progress. The legislators who have supported it have done so, you know, wishing that they could go even further and ban even more of these kinds of, of kind of tax-based thefts between, between communities. The bill that we've proposed goes about as far as we can get without, without raising a whole bunch of opposition from other organizations and interest in cities. But, and so it is an important step forward, and really appreciate Senator Pan taking on this, on this fight on our, on our behalf and on behalf of what's really fair for, for cities all across California. Then the annual meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors was, has occurred also since our last meeting, just a couple elements from that. The Conference of Mayors did adopt a broad policy on the White House executive order on floodplain management that we've been talking about and working on now for, I want to say six years. The original Nixon or Carter executive order from the late '70s, early '80s, that essentially said the federal government shouldn't be investing any money in floodplanes, which just happened to be most of urban America. And it's basically, it's, you know, written by floodplain managers, but it was, the bottom line of it was, the effect, if it were, if it actually had been implemented, would it would be, say, the federal government should not support the building of a hospital in a floodplain like here or downtown Sacramento. The federal government should not be building highways. The federal government should not be building levees. The federal government should not be making investments. So we've been working over several years to try to change that executive order to be not just more realistic, but also support the policies that the federal government has since the late '70s and early '80s have been adopting, which is more of the nation's economic growth and activity should be occurring in communities like this one, you know, that are central, that are urban, that have access to transportation and where people already live. We've made a lot of progress, but there's still a lot of challenges in the executive order as it's emerged. So the Conference of Mayors nationally, which has been a key ally of ours in trying to advance our West Sacramento agenda, adopted our proposal on going back to the White House one more time with a set of changes to try to make that workable. We also were asked to present on the West Sacramento Urban Farm Program to the National Food Policy Task Force at the conference. A lot of cities are interested in replicating what's been happening in our, in our system of urban farms, not just the single urban farm at Fifth and C, but urban farms as a strategy for career pathway development in the agricultural sector, for neighborhood revitalization, for activation of long-term development properties, and for food security and access to healthy, healthy local foods. And that, as a result of, the State Department happened to be at that presentation, and as a result of that presentation, I've been asked to go represent the city and all of the cities of America in, at the World Expo to present on urban agriculture, strategies for urban agriculture that are being piloted in West Sacramento, and how they might be replicated and scaled in Europe and Africa and Asia and other parts of the world as well. So it's a, it's a pretty big, it's a pretty big platform for what started off as a tiny little project at the corner of Fifth and C. But it's also, it's going to be, it's going to be a tremendous opportunity also to promote our global food hub and the work that's happening with the Code for America Project and West Sacramento as a center of food innovation across the country. So it's going to, it will be a really great economic development opportunity as well. And then last on that, I think I previewed before the Conference of Mayors meeting that we were going to win a significant award. We did. West Sacramento and Future Ready, which is our intermediary on youth in the, in the community, won first place in the national grant competition for the Community Wins Program, which, and that grant is going to support a Future Ready project that we've been working on with major employers in the city and the schools around, and the school district in particular, River City High School, that will provide a guaranteed paid internship to every student in our local schools that are, that are making, they're on track in a college and career pathway. It's a pretty groundbreaking project, and the city's in a good position to help because of the work that the city manager and his team have been doing on the STEPS internship program that the city is trying to be a model. And the school district's been, been making some significant advances in this work already. So it's, it's emerged, the White House is actually also, also has to join the National Tech Hire Initiative as part of this program because of the, of the model, the potential that this guaranteed internship program has to really accelerate college and career readiness and youth opportunity for young people in communities just like ours across the country. So some, some pretty exciting stuff. All right, and Mr. LaDesmond, who was on, he's been traveling, he's flying here from Washington, DC. He should be here within the hour or so. Item 1C is appointments to boards and commissioners. We don't have any of those this evening, so we're going to proceed to the consent agenda, which is items 2 through 16. Are there items that any member of the council wishes to remove? Or any items for separate question or comment? Okay, I'm going to, item 9, the Stone Lock Development Agreement. And I also want to have some questions on item 15, which is the Housing Authority, JPA. Any others? All right, and we have requests for a public comment, items 3 and 5 as well. All right, so with that, we'll proceed to item 3, which is consideration of Resolution 15-35 authorizing the collection of ad valorem property taxes for existing assessment districts and community facility districts for authorized capital facility construction purposes. And our request is for public comment. Thank you, but that's by Ms. Flint.
Sorry, I'm having, having trouble hearing you this evening. It's probably me.
I don't think so, because I've seen a few others. So I don't have, I have no volume control here, but if, if anyone with a, with a volume control that's within the sound of my voice can adjust it, that would be great. Thanks.
I just have a couple of quick questions. This resolution is used to make debt service payments on outstanding bonds. Are those bonds that have already been issued, or are those related to the lease bonds further on in the agenda? I know you can't answer me. And then, what are some of the examples of the other purposes previously authorized by the city? I didn't see any of those in the agenda item. So from now on, perhaps you could put a little bit more detail into the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flint. Mr. Blumberg?
Yes, the, the purpose of the report in Resolution 15, 34, and 35 is, is to meet a requirement of Yolo County. In order for us to put assessments on the regular tax roll, we have to get an authorization annually from the city council. In terms of this resolution, it deals with what we call our facility, community facility districts. Those are ones where we've issued bond debt in order to basically pay for public improvements. So, so the answer is yes, these are, these are bonds that have been issued previously. And they are, they're what we call Melrose bonds, and they're not, they have no relationship to the lease revenue bonds that are on a later agenda item. And in terms of the previous purposes, those are approved by the city council at the time the bonds are issued. So we usually don't provide the detail of what those bonds went for, what they were expended for, but we do have another report that we usually bring back to you in December, every December, on our CFDs, that does describe what the expenditures have gone to in those districts. So we do have a separate report that comes in December that describes those things.
Thank you. All right, item 5 is consideration of the fiscal year 2015, 16 authorized position list. And again, we just have one request for a public comment, and that's by Ms. Flint.
What item are we on? I'm sorry.
Five, the authorized position list.
Thank you, okay. This one is a big concern of mine, and I've been before you many, many times concerning public safety. In this agenda item, it says there will be three less firefighters. There, there are empty positions now that haven't been filled, and so you're just going to delete them off the books. Why? This is a city that's growing. This is a city that needs public safety. This is a city that had an accreditation that has already had Station 45 cuts last year. I don't know where these three firemen are being cut from. It's a big concern of mine, and as we grow, we even need more policemen than you authorized in this budget. You need to take away from something else and put it in this budget. You need to take away from something else and put it in public safety. Flood control, firefighters, police officers, anything that has to do with the safety of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. The authorized position list is merely a document that implements the budget. So it's not, the position list itself is not creating or eliminating actual allocations for positions, but maybe you can describe the firefighter, the genesis of the firefighter piece?
Yes. So we've had three vacant positions for a long period of time, and we've filled the work basically through overtime. And so part of this effort as the budget was we increased the overtime and eliminated the positions so that our budget reflected the realities of how we're running the department based on the chief's directions.
Thank you. All right. Item eight is consideration of draft terms for a development agreement with the Sacramento-Yolo Port District on the Stone Lock property in Southport. And maybe you could just open this, because a workshop is an odd thing to be having on consent, because you're not getting any, not typically any feedback. So maybe you can give us some basic background on this, so we can provide actual feedback in the workshop format?
Sure.
Number nine?
Yes, number nine. So we're bringing this before you this evening. It's in a draft term form. So originally, a little background on this, the Stone Lock property originally was, belonged to the Redevelopment Agency. And through the elimination of redevelopment, the successor agency has taken that over. And it is a property that's listed in the Long Range Property Management Plan. Through that process over the years, there has, there was an option agreement that was done between Cordish and the Redevelopment Agency on the property. That has, the names have changed a little bit, but the parties are still somewhat the same. So then the current name that's with, that has the option agreement is Stone Lock District Holdings, which Cordish is a partner in that holding company. And Cordish has tried for years to come up with a plan for the property and a development agreement, but there's been many obstacles. Flood protection environment has changed, redevelopment was eliminated. And so at this time, they want to pursue other opportunities. So the option agreement provides for it to be reassigned back to the port, but there's a process for that, and there needs to be a development agreement. So what we've done, rather than do a full workshop and bring an entire document before the council, we wanted to get feedback on some of the basic terms, and those are outlined in attachment one that staff has come up with in working with port business staff as well. And that way, we're not spending a lot of time developing a legal document that neither party may like. So this development agreement, since there is not a current plan for how the property will develop, we're not vesting in any rights based on California land use. A lot of development agreements usually will vest, like in a zoning ordinance or a certain land use pattern. That's not occurring. It's not granting any rights about future development of the property. It's really taking a look at what the vision is currently under the Southport Framework Plan, and also containing some terms in it with respect to acknowledging some of the covenants and IODs, irrevocable offers of dedication for roadways that have been recorded on the property, some acknowledgements with respect to those. And then also trying to keep in mind the spirit of the option agreement and past considerations by the Redevelopment Agency, successor agencies, city council, and port with respect to this property and the vision. So you'll see in here a development vision statement, which refers to a lot what's contained in the Southport Framework Plan for that area, as well as sort of a visioning looking forward, given where we're going with the general plan update and the fact that we're currently in the process of analyzing all of the property being a land use of mixed use. So it's really going to provide a blank slate for the future. And then the duration of the agreement, three years, is what we're currently happy for you with the potential for five three-year extensions. And that's kind of the same way the option agreement was, was done. So tonight, we're really just looking for your direction on whether we've hit the mark with respect to the city council on some of these terms and your expectations. And then we'll be going to the Port Commission similarly with just the draft terms. And then ultimately, this will make its way, once we have all direction, in the form of a legal document. It will go to the Planning Commission in a public hearing for their recommendation, and then back to the city council on the port. Ultimately, we hope to have this done before the end of the year, because that is Stone Lock Holdings' desire. So that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Kristoff?
Shirley, just some clarification. Usually when we see a development agreement, we're talking about 1,132 homes. We're talking about very specific kinds of things that can go on a piece of property. And this seems to be a lot more general. And I think the Planning Commission also will be asking, when do the meat and potatoes really come into this? When will we be able to talk about this block should be for retail, or this, these acres should be for housing, or this acreage should be for a park? When do they have that opportunity?
So that will come sometime down the road. We didn't want to go to that level of detail at this point. There isn't a developer waiting in the wings on this property. We didn't want to tie the hands of the property for the future. We also, you know, that would also trigger additional environmental review.
Right.
And we just, you know, trying to meet the schedule of our partner, we didn't, we didn't think we could achieve that if we went into a significant amount of master planning. So one of the terms in here indicates a requirement for a master plan to be brought forth should the port pursue sale of the property in the future. So it's envisioned that at that time, if another master developer comes forth, that they would come up with a concept that would start bringing forth some of those details.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Johansson?
No, I just, I mean, I think this is an appropriate step at this point to at least stabilize the situation until we have actually someone who's interested in doing something with the property, and this provides enough, you know, protections that we still have some control of the property. So I think it's, I'm fine with the term she says it is.
Cindy?
And I would concur with my colleague, Councilwoman Johansson. I think there's enough detail, just enough, I mean, it's enough detail, but also enough flexibility.
You got your...
Enough detail as much as, and flexibility. Thank you.
Yeah. This kind of a frame of a development agreement light is, makes me nervous, and it should make, you know, everybody a little bit nervous, and it does. But this is an agreement between us and the board, and the board, and we are obviously close partners. Most of the Port Commissioners are, they're all West Sacramento residents, and four of them are members of this council. So I think that also provides an additional layer of comfort that our interests, while distinct, are, will be aligned going forward. Because I think what we, we know, we're still committed to the kinds of, the themes that we described in the original Stone Lock work and the work that we have been discussing with Cordish, that we weren't interested in creating simply more housing, or creating another, replicating something that already exists in Southport, that this was to be a significant amenity or set of amenities, something distinctive for, that would serve Southport, the middle of the city, the whole city, and provide connectivity to the whole city, especially now that it's connected by Fifth Street and Riverfront, all the way, all the way from the, and soon with Village Parkway, all the way to the, from the southeast, from the southeast Village, all the way to the very north of the city and Broderick. That this is a, it's a key parcel, and it's a key set of parcels in the city. And we have a, you know, we have a pretty, you know, high standard for what needs to be accomplished here, as opposed to, you know, just a simple housing subdivision. And so if we didn't have that close partnership with the port, I would be more concerned that this development agreement doesn't lock down every provision that we would need to prevent that from occurring. But I am comfortable with the provisions of the agreement that's been outlined here, and as we proceed to the next stages. So, thanks.
All right. Item 12 is consideration of approval of plans and specifications and award construction contract to Arrow Construction for the 2015 water meter installation project. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mary. Yeah, this, I think this question is really, I'm totally in favor of this particular agenda item and the movement toward metering all residents. I know it's been an issue in the past, but the fact is, we have so many folks that aren't metered now that we just don't know where the water's going. And I think it's fair to, people who have meters, to have this kind of installation going. So my only question was, this, the difference between the engineering estimate of 600, 2,000, and these other estimates, why would that be so off? I mean, it's, you know, what, 37,000 for the recommended contractor, but what would cause a variation with the high bidder? Do you have any idea?
I do. The low bidder, which was Arrow Construction, was relatively close, I believe, around 5%. The reason why I anticipate that the high bidder was so high was because I put a short contract date on it, 16 days, because we have federal dollars, and so we have to actually wrap up the grant application and construction by the end of September. So I condensed the days. So that would increase their workforce and overhead. So I anticipate that they believe that it would take more workforce, more manpower to accomplish that in that time.
Okay. But both the, basically, the bid was, there's always going to be cost overrides, and there's a contingency on any of these contracts. And both of these include those types of contingencies, similar percentage?
Correct.
Okay. That was it?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item 15 is consideration of Resolution 15-21, recognizing the continued need for Housing Authority services in West Sacramento and supporting the exploration of a joint powers authority as an alternative governance structure. Is this, is this, Mr. Johansson? Could you describe just a little bit more of the background of the housing, of this JPA concept? Because the attachment's all about the Housing Authority. But JPAs, I know, have been an issue, you know, countywide through LAFCO, through the Managers Group. The Housing Authority itself has been, you know, an issue in terms of its governance. So could you provide a bit more background than?
Yes.
What's before us and where this is headed?
Well, currently, the governance model for the Housing Authority is really, the day-to-day operation is overseen by a Housing Commission that is technically appointed by the Board, the County Board of Supervisors. And that, previous to that, the Board of Supervisors actually served as the Housing Authority Board. So now, what the Board had asked the county staff to do was to look at alternative governance structures that actually vested what is currently the commission in a different governance model that gave them the authority that they sort of have already, without having the Board of Supervisors being able to come in and act as a vetoing body. So the Housing Authority and county staff explored, discussed some different models, and they, the county thought that it was wisest to pursue a joint powers authority, where each one of the member cities in the county would possibly have a seat on that, on that board, and actually become the governing, the governing body of the Housing Authority, taking that board, the Board of Supervisors, out of that veto or ultimate authority role. So this, the resolution the council's being asked to pass tonight is really just to support the exploration of that model, and for the, to come back and report periodically on how those discussions are progressing. All the cities in the county have, except for us, have passed, support, have voiced their support for this. I think most of them acted last week. Does that answer your question?
A little bit. Maybe Mr. Johansson's outputs are representative, or is the county's appointed representative on our behalf?
Well, no, I just think that the, this model gives the cities a little more stake in the outcome of housing. You know, we've looked at the interaction with the Bridge to Housing project, which is basically Yolo County housing, or Yolo Housing, and of course, the city, cooperation with the city. But having this type of organization, at least the thought is that for the cities to have an official seat at the table, there's more engagement in creating housing within their cities, or more engagement of the need for, or the management of affordable housing within their cities. So I know there's going to be a lot of discussion as this comes out, but I think that's the theory. And plus, I think, you know, just the, I think there's a note in the, the report on just the number of meetings and, you know, supervisors, I think, kind of, you know, wanting to see this kind of, not so much on their table, but, you know, kind of focus more on the cities in the area.
Is the, I'm just asking in general terms. So if we, you're recommending this, that there's a staff working group that's working on this, but it's fundamentally, I mean, determination of a governance structure is really a policy-level discussion about, okay, who's at, who's at stake, who should have the authority, what's the democracy, who's going to be paying for this, what's the liability issue? So I'm not sure that that's necessarily the, at least, when we've set up the Habitat JPA, the spectacular success that that was, and several of the other ones, they've always had at least a, they've had an elected official steering committee that's been having overall responsibility for that. So I hope that's envisioned in this process, that it's not simply a staff working group that the city managers have designated, and it comes back to each of the councils, fully baked for a final vote and ratification at the end.
No, I think the working group is just meant, meaning to start, you know, establishing what, what should be contained in a JPA agreement, some alternatives, and then they'll probably discuss where the next, you know, where the next step should go as far as coming back to the different policymaking bodies. I mean, if, if there is a, you know, concern about having a higher-level policy group meet to discuss it, that's certainly something that can, we can, when we convey our approval of going forward, we can convey that we have some interest in doing that.
And what's the financing of the, I mean, is this, do we, under this, under the arrangement that's envisioned, would we have a financial responsibility to fund the Housing Authority as a member of the JPA?
What I've been told so far is that the funding mechanisms will remain the same. The Housing Authority gets most of their money from the federal government and other sources. There were not, there's not anticipated to be a city contribution at this time. Nor are the powers and duties of the Housing Authority expected to change at this time. Maybe Mr. Johansson could comment on that?
No, I think that's my understanding as well. You know, the Housing Authority is basically funded through the Federal HUD program. They also have a number of different projects that provide support for the projects as well. So at least at the Housing Authority, we've been given the heads-up that this is going to be planned. We've given the authority for Lisa Baker to pursue at least the planning stages. So even at the Housing Authority, we don't have the final details of what this is about. So this has really been at the staff level, and we're waiting to get back, kind of the, kind of like the other JPAs that we're doing, or, you know, joint service agreements that we're looking at in the county, looking at reports back from staff on, you know, where does everybody sit? So if the city approves it tonight, then all cities would be on board at least to kind of look at the future planning. And of course, you've got a lot of policy questions that are going to be coming up before this is implemented, hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay, great. I mean, the only thing I'd just point out as we go forward is just that the county-level JPAs are typically, we used to really argue strongly for every city to be at the table, and every city have one vote, the county has one vote, back when we were the second smallest city in the county. We, I mean, it's highly likely by the end of this decade that we could be the second-largest city in the county, or the largest city in the county. And in this domain, we already are. I mean, that, that most of the Housing Authority's vouchers and programs, other than the agricultural worker program, is predominantly in West Sacramento. So just as we, as we continue to, you know, look at that, in a system that is managed at the county level, we have, we will ultimately have a larger voice in the supervisors than we might in a city-by-city strategy. So it's not, it's not an answer, but as we pay, we ought to pay attention to the long-term trajectory that we're on, and the, and the core interests that we have, or that, some of which we may want to, we want, we do want to share broadly and spread the risk and spread some of the challenges. But just to be, be thinking about where we're, where we're, both our democracy now and where we're, where we're headed. So, great. All right. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mary, I'd only note that we received a staff document that updated Agenda Item two and four just before we vote. It was amendments.
I saw that. I think we're missing, oh, there's an extra one here?
Yeah.
Did you find?
No.
All right, why don't we, why don't we defer on the vote on the consent agenda for a moment while make sure we have an opportunity just to read the materials that we, at least for Mr. Kristof and I, that we're just seeing these, it's only three sentences, but get a chance to take a quick look at it. So we'll return to the vote on the consent agenda in just a moment, while we're, while we're proceeding there. We will move to Item 17, which is a continued public hearing and consideration of Resolution 15-10 and financing authority of Resolution 15-11, authorizing execution of a site lease, facilities lease, and other documents associated with the 2015 lease obligations in order to fund streetcar and flood capital improvements.
Mayor, members of the council, back in, on February 18th, this past February, we presented you the concept of doing a lease revenue bond structure to capitalize the Measure B sales tax revenues. Those are the revenues that accrue from a quarter cent sales tax that was approved by the voters back in 2008. And then the funds would be expended pursuant to Measure U, which directed that they, they be spent on both the streetcar and flood improvement projects. So back in February, you directed the finance team to prepare the bond documents necessary to issue the lease revenue bonds, and we are bringing back a number of those bond documents for you to consider tonight. I'll just recap and note that back on June 17th, we did come to you with a workshop on some ideas of how we might expand the scope of the financing, and we heard clear direction from you that you wanted us to stick with what was presented in February. So that, that is what is included in tonight's action. We are looking at a structure that includes three key documents that you'll be considering, site lease, facilities lease, and an escrow agreement, a trust and escrow agreement. And, and so you're going to have a couple of resolutions that involves both the city and the West Sacramento Financing Authority. The one thing I'd point out that's unique about the city Resolution 15-10 is that you have to make certain findings, that the proceeds from the bonds will be used on improvements that have a public benefit. And hence, what we'd like you to do before you consider those resolutions is to hold a public hearing, as is required under, under law. And then after that, consider approval of the two resolutions before you. With that said, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Other questions for staff at this time? Mr. Kristof?
Paul, how does, how does this Measure V, how do the funds work with Sacramento turning down the streetcar? And are we going to be bonding future V, Measure V funds to offset any of the addition, I mean, we have a commitment that we've made, and we will follow that. But there's no other monies involved, right?
Yeah, the, the bonds that we would issue would only address the city of West Sacramento's local match component, and it would include, you know, funding that's identified in your adopted CIP to go to the streetcar project, nothing else. There was a separate memo, I believe, that was distributed to you that describes the current status of the city Sacramento's funding efforts, and I believe there's going to be a workshop in August dealing with that issue. Let me just say, the real intent of coming to you sooner rather than later is that there's the Federal Transit Administration grant that's, that's out there, and showing commitment of this city to make that local matches is the reason we're bringing, bringing this forward now. Otherwise, we'd likely wait until it was time to issue the bonds.
Right.
At a later date. So nothing says that we, we need to issue the bonds with the action you're approving tonight. It's really to show the city's commitment to that local match and how that, that match would be funded, and we can provide it to the federal government. When it comes time to issue the bonds, and right now, in our schedule, we are anticipating possibly as early as December, that we come back to you, you need to approve a couple of key documents that are kind of time-sensitive. And so we're not having you approve those now, because they would just need to be updated. And that includes the preliminary official statement, as well as a bond purchase agreement. So there are a couple of documents that we would be coming back to you with before we'd issue bonds. And again, obviously, the, all the funding needs to come together for that to happen.
Does this affect any future bonding capacity for flood protection?
No. One of the things the bond would do is provide, is per the council's direction, an allocation of 10 million that would go to the flood projects coming out of this. And there's always the potential that, you know, we could, we could break the bonding up. So if flood needed the money sooner, we could always, the way the bond documents are structured, do a couple series of bonds, depending on when those needs show up. But right now, just because we did a West AFCA bond earlier this year, we don't, we don't foresee a need for those funds in the near term.
All right, thank you.
There's no further questions for Paul at this time. We'll open the public hearing on Item 17, and we have one request to speak on that. That's by Mrs. Flint.
I evidently don't have enough to do in my life. I have several questions. One, is this actual a bonding mechanism, or is this a lone COP? I mean, you haven't gone to the public for approval of bonds, so how can we go out for a bond without public approval? And so I have several questions that will not be answered in that degree. You also mentioned here flood capital improvements from Measure V. I've heard no discussion of that at all from the city council. It could be that I've missed it. And I guess, I'm so frustrated with this agenda tonight because I don't have the answers that I need to make semi-intelligent comments. And it's frustrating to me, it has to be frustrating to you as council members, and it definitely is frustrating to the public. And I just don't understand what's going on. I mean, I know you want the streetcar. I know it's important to you. It's not something that's important to me. Public safety is what's important to me. I lived through the streetcars. That's how old I am. I've also lived through almost flooding while the streetcars were active. So I'm telling you, get yourself together and get your priorities straight. Sacramento did not approve wanting the streetcar taxes. I didn't know there's some election on this agenda tonight where two people or three people got to vote. And again, I didn't have time to go through all of the fine details, but it's definitely frustrating. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And with that, we'll close the public hearing. Ms. Blumberg, any additional information, or there were questions about the nature of the bonding?
Let me respond to that question. The process we're following for the bonding is the Marx-Roose Local Bond Pulling Act of 1985. So we're following all the procedures as required by the law in order to issue the bonds. In terms of the revenues that we would be bonding against, they were, it was approved by the voters back in 2008, and the purpose of the uses would be those directed by the voters as part of a proposition.
All right, thank you. Yes, I should start, this one, as a former member of the school board. The city has much broader ranges of revenue sources that are, that are legally bondable, that a school district cannot engage in. We cannot bond against the general fund without a vote of the people. That is, that's required by the Constitution, and we never have. But we are permitted to bond against a revenue stream, and in this case, the revenue stream has been, was approved by the people for the purpose of, by the voters of the community for the purpose of streetcar and flood protection. And that's what, that's simply what this measure is about. So, Mr. Johannesen?
I mean, maybe just to, to address kind of the comment on this funding. I think a lot of people don't, don't know the maze of funding mechanisms that the city has to do, it does what it needs to do. And, and it's very specific, and we're pelt to the law on what we can do with these funds. So we have a potty money here, and it looks like we could spend that on police and fire, but we can't. It's got to be for a specific use. So usually, the only thing are general fund monies where I think we've got some discretion to do, but, you know, all these special monies that come in, we can't, we've got to do it for a specific purpose. We're bound by law to do it. So, and we're, I know we're all concerned about public safety here, health and safety and welfare, I think are, they should be our top priorities. But, you know, we try to do what we can do with the funds that are available to do that. And that's, that's kind of the nature of the business.
Well over 80% of our funding, our general fund is for police and fire, and most of the remainder is for parks and recreation. So the, it is, it is definitely a core priority and a core purpose of the, of the community. But one of the reasons why the city's been effective at getting lots and lots of external grant funding is because we've made financing mechanisms like, we've created financing mechanisms like this that allow us to make a local match that other communities can't do. And that has resulted in somewhere in the order of a billion dollars of additional investment that would not have happened in the absence of them. So it's a pretty significant benefit to the community when we figure out ways to, to engage, to use these kind of financing instruments to maximize the value of the revenue streams that the voters have approved overwhelmingly. In this case, the voter, this, the streetcar is not a council priority, it is a community priority as expressed by the voters. Same thing with the, with the, with the flood protection project. So. All right, any other questions or discussion on Item 17? Not as there are motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
It's been moved by Ms. Sandin, seconded by Mr. Johannesen. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing done. That motion carries. Oh, so now we'll return to the consent agenda. Was a motion made and seconded? Okay, and may I ask for a motion and a second on that, on the consent agenda with the modifications that are in the staff memo? It's moved by Ms. Sandin and seconded by Mr. Johannesen. All right, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing done. That motion carries unanimously. Item 18 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 15-42, calling a special election to levy a special tax within a portion of Community Facilities District M, and Resolution 15-50, declaring the results of the election held on July 15th, 2015, and ordering the amendment to CFDM by creating a special tax zone within CFDM. First reading of ordinance 15-5, levying and apportioning a special tax in Zone 2 of CFDM. Mr. Blumberg?
Back on May 20th, the city council approved a resolution of consideration that would amend portions of CFDM, that's our Rivers Services District, to add a zone related to transit services, or transit service benefit zone. That resolution initiated the CFD amendment process that includes the need for a special election of qualified electors. And, and so there has to be a public hearing as part of that. And so we'd ask you to hold that public hearing tonight before you consider the resolutions. But, but after the public hearing, we'd request, request that you approve a Resolution 15-14, 15-42, which calls for a special election, and then Resolution 15-50 that declares the results of the election and orders an amendment to the CFDM RMA to include Zone 2. I'd just note that the result of the special election has been certified by the city clerk, and that it would be attached to Resolution 15-50. In addition, after the actions approving the resolutions, we'd ask that the city council conduct the first reading of ordinance 15-6. That's the ordinance that apportions levies of the special tax. And then we would come back for adoption of the ordinance in your first meeting in August. August 5th concludes staff's recommendation.
All right, are there questions for staff at this time? All right, seeing none, we're going to open the public hearing on Item 18. Don't have any requests to speak on the item, but it is a, this is a statutory public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item?
If you have a question, you can.
All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on Item 18, and return to the council. Are any further questions or discussion, or for motion? As I understand, Mr. Blumberg, you're asking that the motion first be placed on Items, on the first and second, adoption of the resolutions, and then that we would do, conduct the first reading, or can we do all in one action?
You can, you can adopt them concurrently.
Okay, we can do all.
And the results of the election would be attached to the one resolution.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion?
I'll move the recommended action concurrently.
All right.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Ms. Sandin and seconded by Mr. Kristof. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing done. That motion carries. Item 19 is a public hearing and report of Measure K and Measure V revenue and dispersments. Sharma?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Natacha Sharma with the City Finance Department. Today, we are requesting this council to conduct a public hearing on the annual Measure K slash Measure V report, receive the revenue and dispersments report, and direct staff to publish this report. This is the 12th year of the Measure K presentation. In your packet, we have included a scorecard that demonstrates the, how we adhere to that council Resolution 0258 that was adopted pursuant to Advisory Measure J. And then we also have included a Measure K full report on revenues and dispersments. The scorecard demonstrates that staff adheres to our council direction. The scorecard, as I said, is broken into two parts, base allocation and capital, capital allocation. Base allocation is the quarter cents of the half cent override, and funds are allocated on a as-needed basis. Some of the funds, some of the programs are spending more than their annual allocation, for example, the water or public safety, while some of them are spending less than their annual allocation, for example, street maintenance. The second part of the report is the capital allocation, as most of the costs were allocated during the, the initial phase of Measure, Measure K, which was 2003, as part of the accelerated road rehab project. This program ended on March 31st, 2013, and from April 114, we, voters approved Measure U and V on November 2008. So funds are being accounted for. The capital portion is, has been continued, and we are accounting money for Measure U and V projects. Measure U and Measure V projects are streetcar and flood. There's only one project right now in Measure V, which is a streetcar design project with $2.7 million allocation, and to date, we have spent $400,000 to date. So this concludes staff's presentation. We are planning to publish this report in the newsletter. It's, a report is going to be available at the Yolo County Library and also at the city clerk's office. I'd like to return it to you, Mr. Mayor, to open the public hearing.
Are there questions for Mr. Sharma before we open the public hearing? Mr. Johannesen?
Yeah, just quickly, the report that you're going to publish, is it kind of a citizen's version of this?
Yes, yes. It's the, it's the report, the Measure K Revenue and Dispersments Report. It lists the actual allocation and what the expense was for.
And how big is this report?
It is, actually, it's about 17 pages, but on the newspaper.
17?
It's on here, but on the newspaper, it's about half a page or so, half a page to a one page.
Okay, yeah, I just, to comment that this has really got to be condensed in a meaningful way for people to understand, because I think it, well, I'll save any further comments until afterwards.
Mr. Kristof?
Yeah. Natacha?
Yes.
About the fourth paragraph down in our staff report, it says, "On July 16th, the council approved an allocation of $2 million in cash balance to streetcar operations." Excuse me. "The amount estimated 2002-3 is $1 million cash balance to Measure K, reserved use for future projects determined by the council, and ongoing allocation of $225,000 to streetcar operation and maintenance." It seems like we had things bouncing around. Is that the case, or?
It's actually, if you, the scorecard demonstrate that we allocated $29 million in Measure K base program. However, we spent only 26, because during the early years, we were not allocating money for streetcar or light rail. But the allocation was made. So what we did in July 16, 2014, we came to council, we said we have about $3 million in, in. we came to council, we said we have about three million dollars in unrestricted fund balance, and we wanted to make whole the streetcar, light rail operations if we continued from two thousand and three by allocating two million dollars. And then we allocated a million dollars to, for projects that council, based on council's approval. So there was only two hundred thousand dollars spent on that, and so we have eight hundred thousand dollars remaining for council to authorize on any other projects.
And these are for capital projects?
Yes, for, it could be, it's Measure K, so it could be any, it could be capital, it could be base.
Yeah, I would just like to say, I know that when, I think Christopher and I were probably the only ones on the council then, but one of the things that we had asked for was this accounting. We went to the voters to see if they would approve a sales tax override. They did, and we promised them at that time that we would have this accounting and we would publish it in the paper every year. And every year, you guys in finance have done all that, and I know that I get stopped at the grocery store and stuff and say, gee, thank you for explaining that, or thank you for making sure you followed through. And I've always felt really good about making sure we follow through because that means the level of trust from the community should continue to foster and continue to be good. Thank you.
Aye, Ms. Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments actually segues nicely with those two. I know that there's a mention in the staff report of publishing this in the newsletter, and you mentioned the library, but it does seem to me, and it probably is done, that it's on our website so that folks can pull it up or do a City Lights piece. Because I do think the public, general public wants to know about the use of these funds, and so that's just another suggestion. And I know we still have the public hearing to go for.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we were, this was a, this was a breakthrough in a lot of ways for this community when we first concocted this crazy idea of this special sales tax, which since that time, almost all the other cities in the county have adopted the same thing or tried. But the basic idea, which was that because of the way that city governments are funded, new development generates development impact fees that can, you know, create lots of, you know, great amenities and stuff like that. And so our newer neighborhoods that we were just building in Southport had, you know, the latest and greatest amenities, but because of the Prop thirteen and some of the other finance changes, there's no, there is no mechanism to make the same kind of investments in the existing neighborhoods where we are all from. And could we come up with a finance mechanism that would allow us to make some improvements in the existing neighborhoods, even though the state and federal policies don't give us the dollars to do that in any direct way? And not for gigantic projects. This was not to fund the, you know, the brand new bridge or what have you, but to do a series of things that would make a, you know, significant difference in the whole city, but with a particular eye towards the areas of the city that were not in new development areas. And we, you know, our Public Works Director is, you know, unhappy with the state of our roads, and so are we. But it's, one of the reasons why we actually, the state of our roads is better than most other cities in the region is because of the Measure J and K investments that were made over several years that allowed for the resurfacing of most roads in the city in that period when other cities were able to do virtually nothing. The creation of the universal preschool program that's been a, you know, national model and providing, assures preschool, high quality preschool to every four-year-old in the city was made possible. This is Tower Bridge sidewalks, the, you know, there's a million small projects that together have contributed to improving the quality of life in neighborhoods that otherwise would not have that kind of support. And it's been, it's been adopted by other cities in the, in the region and state as a way to try to deal with that challenge. So I think this has been, I'm very proud of this, you know, this initiative that we first created, I don't know, twelve years ago, fifteen years ago, in terms of what it's meant, but this report is an important part of that work to, not just for, it's for the public, but it's also for us to make sure that we're staying true to what that was about. Because there's always, you know, the city manager knows this, we're always watching to make sure this money's not going into, it's not just bleeding into the bureaucracy of city organization, but this is for creating those high-value amenities and improvements that make our existing neighborhoods and places in West Sacramento better. And this report helps to make sure that the community can hold us accountable and we can hold our whole team accountable. So it's, it's good work, appreciate it. All right, so with that, we're going to open the public hearing on item nineteen, and our, we have one request to speak on this item, it's by Mrs. Flint.
Thank you. I've been around long enough to know what Measure J and K does and is and how it's spent, and I do appreciate all the accounting of that also. I think that it can be tweaked. Measure J and K is for, was for public safety, fire, police, to support all those kinds of things. It was to support parks and recreation. And having a soon-to-be nine-year-old grandson, I've been visiting other communities that have sports complexes that are amazing. And this city needs a sports complex to accommodate all the children in this community that play sports. And I'm not talking just baseball, soccer. They're into everything. And I would like to have a sports complex that makes us proud, that adults and children could use. So that's, that's my gig for the night. And nothing is more of a priority, again, like I've said before tonight, than fire, flood, and police protection. Measure J and K money can be used for that. Measure J and K money is not used for streetcars. However, Measure V is, and I voted against that, but that's neither here nor there. You know, I just think you need some more public dialogue where we can talk to you, all of you together, not individually. I know Mr. Johansson's out there in the neighborhood, I know I can see Bill every day, I've seen Bev more the last few months. And actually, I've seen Christopher out there, and that, that's very nice, Christopher, I appreciate that. But you need to listen to us, and we need to listen to you. And we need to set priorities and set them in a way that benefits all of West Sacramento. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Flint. All right, so with that, we'll close the public hearing on item nineteen. Return to council for any further comments. All right, does this require a motion? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we receive and file agenda report, Measure K and Measure V revenues disbursements, and direct staff to publish the report of revenue dispersments.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kristoff and seconded by Ms. Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. Item twenty is a public hearing in consideration of resolution dash fifteen dash forty-six certifying inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water, sewer, and refuse services on the secured tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and directing that a lien also be placed on the subject properties.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Claire Connor from Finance Division of Administrative Services Department. Finance Division handles the financial part of the utility services. At the end of each fiscal year, we rely on the annual transfer of the delinquent amount to the property tax bill for collection. The delinquent notices were sent to all property owners have, delinquent may balance us at least a hundred seventy-five dollars. As of today, the total delinquent amount has been further reduced to eight hundred eighty-one thousand. Since the agenda report was drafted, we will continue to receive payment through the end of July before compiling the final tax roll. We will make sure the final delinquent list submitted to the county is accurately prepared. With that, I would like to return this item to you for public hearing. Thank you.
Are there any questions at this time? Seeing none, we're going to open the public hearing on item twenty. You have one request to speak. It's by John Correa.
Hello, I've been, I don't know why I'm even here doing this, but I've been receiving the bill for the last probably about five months now. I've tried canceling the bill, they've refused to cancel it. Every time they tell me to cancel it, I receive another bill for it. I've been paying two hundred dollars a month the last five months on this bill, and they keep adding another hundred dollars to it. It's down to like, I just paid another two hundred bucks a couple days ago, it's down to probably a hundred and fifty. And it's going to be up by the twenty-fourth, and then that's when they put a lien on my property and charged me even extra money, even removed the lien, even though it's already been canceled, even if I pay off the bill. It's, the house is a rental property, it's been vacant, the water shut off, there's no power, there's no sewer being used. I've told them to pick up the garbage cans, they've refused to pick up the garbage cans. I don't know if the customer service on the phone just refusing to do it. They keep telling me, okay, we canceled it, we canceled it, next month, receive another bill, another hundred dollars on top of what I owe. I'm just trying to get it canceled as soon as I can. That's it.
Good, all right, thank you. All right, but then we're going to close the public hearing on item twenty. We would typically ask for our key staff on this item to confer with the property owner. Are you already, are you familiar with the case?
Yes, I can talk to the property owner outside the meeting, I'll take care of it.
Okay, all right, so let's, let's defer, let's continue this item right now during the meeting. We'll return to it once you come back, if you, if there is a change in the recommended action, but given opportunity to do that right now. While we proceed, item twenty-one, which is a public hearing in consideration of resolution fifteen dash twenty certifying the list of code enforcement charges, directing that a lien be placed on the subject properties and requesting inclusion of these charges on the secured tax roll in order that they may be collected in the same manner as general taxes.
Good evening, US Mayor and members of the council. I'm Bill Burke, Code Enforcement Manager. The list before you identified as Exhibit A of Resolution fifteen twenty represents those properties that have outstanding code enforcement-related fees that are at least thirty days past due before the end of May. Excuse me. The list only resent, correction, the list only represents those fees related to staff re-inspections, hearings, abatements, or other fees from the council-approved book of fees for the city. They do not include unpaid administrative citations. Those are processed separately through data ticket. It's important to note that the owners reflected on the list are the current owners of record, and they've been notified at least twice to provide an opportunity to pay or question any of the outstanding fees and the associated code enforcement violations. The fees listed in the list remain due as of today, and we will verify again prior to referring to the tax roll. I'm available for any questions.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, just a quick, a couple, couple questions on, so when do you, the timing of when you refer to the tax roll, when would that be?
Typically, it's in August.
So if folks come between now and August and they pay their bills, it will not be referred?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And so you've sent out two notices to people, and those notices, I would assume, have, look, if you don't pay this, it's going to go to lien, something along that line? Is there any point that you see of sending a drop dead notice saying, look, we're really serious? You know, because I know we just heard some comments about some folks that may have, you know, maybe some administrative issues or something with, and we certainly don't want to cause them more problems than are necessary, but.
That is certainly something we can consider. The second notice typically is very, very close to a drop dead notice, and it does invite them to come, and we do make every effort to make sure that that is served on the property itself.
Yeah, I'm not saying incur a huge amount of expense doing that, but I don't know if there's a way to, well, I don't know, it sounds like basically they either know it or they don't at this point.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Kristoff.
I just found it sort of odd, is one of the, one of the people in the rear's, it looks like it's a business. Is, they own the house?
Yes, sir. These are the owners of record that we have currently on file.
Oh, okay.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
You're open the public hearing then, item twenty-one. This is where we don't have any requests to speak, but this is one of those statutory public hearings. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council on this item? All right, close the public hearing on it. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move and adopt Resolution fifteen twenty certifying the list of code enforcement changes, direct that a lien be placed on the subject properties and relinquishing encouraging of these charges on secured tax roll in order that they may be collected in the same manner as general taxes.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Kristoff and seconded by Mr. Johansson. I just have one, one request on the way that we're displaying these. I think fifteen years ago, we used to, on the sewer and water ones, also used to list the owners' names, and the council actually directed that we cease doing that, that we not sort of publicly shame residents and folks for, for these issues, you know, that until they've been, if I'm guilty somewhere, this just wasn't, wasn't necessarily appropriate for the, for the whole world to know that you have one of these charges in front of you. So I just, I think there's, it's not particularly, it doesn't affect our decision-making, and it does have the potential to, where the owner of record may be unaware, and maybe there's some later resolution that their name not necessarily be published in this, in this way, so. But I'm definitely supportive of the underlying motion, so. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, hearing done, that motion carries. Do we have any, any update on item twenty?
We talked to, I talked to the Mr. Correa, actually, he's no longer on the list because he made enough payment, and we reran this, this list just before the meeting, so.
Oh, okay, so the item that is before us already does not include?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And with that, is there? Mr. Johansson's moved and Ms. Sandin is second, adoption of resolution fifteen forty-six. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. With that, we'll turn to item twenty-two, which is a public hearing in consideration of resolution fifteen dash twenty-three certifying the list of weed abatement charges, directing that a lien be placed on the subject properties and requesting inclusion of these charges on the secured tax roll in order that they may be collected in the same manner as general taxes. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Brian Johnson with the Fire Department. As directed by Resolution fifteen twenty-two, which began the two thousand and fifteen weed abatement process back in April, the Fire Department notified owners of properties which had weed nuisance creating a fire hazard. I'm here tonight to close the two thousand and fifteen weed abatement process. All properties requiring weed abatement by the city have been abated, and a list of charges by parcels has been created, which you have before you in Exhibit C. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for Mr. Johnson at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on item twenty-two. We have no requests to speak on this item. Does anyone wish to address the council on item twenty-two, which is a statutory public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on that item. Return to council. Further discussion or motion? Mr. Johansson moves, and Mr. Kristoff seconds. The staff recommendation on item twenty-two. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing done, that motion carries. Item twenty-three, the city manager has requested that we continue the public hearing in consideration of Resolution fifteen dash forty-eight to, to a date uncertain. So without objection, that'll be the order. Item twenty-four is the City Council workshop on the Broadway Bridge feasibility study. Mr. McCoy.
I'm Romeo, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jason McCoy, Public Works Department, Transportation Division. The cities of West Sacramento and Sacramento continue to study the feasibility of Sacramento River crossings, which would include the Broadway Bridge crossing, which is a presentation that we're bringing before you, as well as a council workshop to obtain your input. Located in South Market area downstream from US Pioneer Bridge, the Broadway Bridge will connect South River Road near Fifteenth Street at the west landing with Broadway in the city of Sacramento on the east landing. This is a tenth-month feasibility study that commenced March fourth. It was brought to the council at that date, along with an agreement with the city of Sacramento to pursue this feasibility study. It's important to note, this feasibility study is funded by Secog Grant and subsequent PAED phase, Project Approval and Environmental Documentation Phase, is a Tiger Grant-funded project of one point five million dollars with equal match from the cities of West Sacramento and Sacramento at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total of three million. The goal of this council workshop is to report the studies that have initiated to date and to provide an opportunity for council feedback, specifically with relation to the alignment, circulation, landings, and also the Neighborhood Friendly Bridge definition that was adopted by the city of Sacramento, but accepted by the city of West Sacramento, not adopted. I'd like to, at this time, introduce Greg Osland with CH2M, that is the firm that was contracted to work on this feasibility study, and he's prepared a presentation for the council this evening.
Thanks.
Good evening, members of the council. Make my comments brief tonight. Are we going to have a PowerPoint up? So as Jason mentioned, this is a joint study between the city of West Sacramento and Sacramento. The, really, this is a technical feasibility study to get us started in terms of identifying fatal flaws and framing up some of the technical issues that we see. We're also going to use this as an opportunity to inform stakeholders about the project on both sides of the river, and particularly on issues of alignments, connections, and bridge types that are available. It's a unique bridge type, a movable span structure, just like Tower and I Street and the planned I Street placement. We'll also be gathering stakeholder input, and that is coming up actually next week, and I'll talk about that a little bit here. And then all of this will be used to set the project up to enter into the environmental phase efficiently. What I mean by that is making sure we have the alternatives that are feasible and screening out those that are not going to be possible for one reason or another. Next slide. One of the early items, this is a very important item for a movable bridge, is to coordinate closely with Coast Guard, which we did. We went out with the Coast Guard onboard on a U.S. Coast Guard auxiliary boat and had a barge pilot actually driving, and he showed us how he would drive a barge down the river, and we dropped a buoy in place after we took a few passes at it and took a GPS shot on it. So that really locks us in in terms of what the opening of the bridge will be. And then from that point, there was discussion right there about what the width should be, and it was decided both by the pilot and by the Coast Guard that the width would be 170 feet, which matches the horizontal opening at Tower Bridge. This is really good news because initially we were looking at potentially matching Pioneer, which is 214 feet. So 170 feet is great. It's very reasonable, and also is going to keep the cost of the new bridge down because that opening will be 170 feet. It also gives us other possibilities, and one other thing I was going to say about this, one thing we didn't expect is that the opening will not be dead center on the river. It will be shifted, as shown on the picture here, to the west. And really, all of that was, according to the pilot, was that's where he needs to be to set up for that large curve in the river. Next slide. So one of the benefits of that narrower opening at 170 feet, it gives the cities a couple more options in terms of movable structure types. See, those are shown here. We'll be able to do a vertical lift. That, you can go as wide as 400 feet, so there's no problem there. The double-leaf bascule is also possible, up to 180 feet. The only trick there will be that, because there's two leaves coming together and you have future streetcar ambitions, there has to be a moment lock, so it's going to add some cost and complexity, but essentially it drives a large bolt between those two spans so they don't deflect when the train goes over. The single-leaf bascule, shown there in the three picture, third picture, that won't be possible. It just can't span more than 100 feet. And then the final one, the swing bridge, like Tower, is definitely feasible, and you might also consider what's called a bobtail swing, where you don't have two openings, you have one opening and then a large counterweight on the other side. So it kind of looks like a single opening, and it is a single opening, but it's counterweighted with that large mass. Next slide. We've completed the initial traffic modeling, just very rough here, to determine what the basic demand is for a two, three, and a four lane scenario. Under the, shown here, we have two columns, one for a connection where the structure would, I'm sorry, the crossing would connect to Jefferson versus a connection to South River. And you can really see, there's really no difference here for the level of precision we're at. But the important takeaway from this slide is that if you were to do a two-lane bridge, that that would draw around 31,000 vehicles a day, and these are in 2040. If you were to do a four-lane bridge, it's going to unleash some light and demand, draw more traffic into the corridor to the tune of 47,000 vehicles a day. The other takeaway I would say about this is that that choice will drive improvements further down the corridor and may require, depending on what choices made there, would require you to do more widening further into your system on Broadway or on South River or in Jefferson. So that's something that we're going to be paying very close attention to.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, I mean, before you get, I don't know if you're going to cover this, but, you know, one of the things about the increased, of course, increased bridge width will increase, you know, car traffic, but what is the impact on the streetcar ridership if we have a streetcar in there? So if we plan for, you know, a four-lane bridge and basically defeats the traffic patterns that we need to support a streetcar, are you doing that in your analysis as well?
At this point, we are in this phase, we have a pretty limited scope, so we're looking at basic kind of engineering feasibility and that sort of thing. So, but the issue you're bringing up definitely will be looked at as a part of the work that will be funded with the Tiger grant, the more detailed work. I think that the, and we are assuming in all of these scenarios that a streetcar would be sharing lanes with vehicles, that we've talked about that. We don't have a scenario that has a dedicated width of bridge for a streetcar.
When you say that it would draw 30,000 or it would draw 47,000, from where? I mean, not all 30,000 of those are brand-new trips that didn't exist or wouldn't have existed anywhere.
Right, right.
Where are they coming from?
Um...
Or where are we diverting those trips?
Right, right.
Either other modes or other corridors?
Probably the easiest answer, and it's what the traffic model is showing, is that those trips are coming from U.S. Fifty, from the Pioneer Bridge. Some come from Tower. But Tower's far enough to the north that folks that use Tower, they're still going to use Tower. So there are a lot of, I'll use the word, but local trips, city to city, home to job, and, you know, with a river, you don't have choices, and we don't have choices to the south. So Pioneer Bridge is carrying a lot of, to the tune of 20,000 trips a day that would be considered, oh, I'm sorry, more than that. The bridge would take, you know, 20,000 up to 40,000 trips off of Pioneer. And I'm kind of oversimplifying, and what we're seeing, of course, these traffic models, I mean, you can, there's lots of ways to look at them, and we're looking at them closely. Because, for example, the one that, one little move that popped out that's very interesting is folks coming north on I-5, say, from Elk Grove in the morning. If we put a bridge in there, they may choose not to go across Pioneer and into West Sacramento. They may jump off of Broadway and turn left. So there's, we, a new bridge will change traffic patterns. So the important thing here is to really get in there and figure out how, and designing this project so it still fits the neighborhood-friendly definition, whatever you define that as. We have some basic guidance, but we do need some more input on what that means, not only to you, the decision-makers, but also to the community.
Okay. I ask as, I mean, both in terms of our potential for future regional, state, and federal funding, the greater contribution we make to the efficiency of the overall system, including those trips that are in Fifty, will enhance our ability to compete for real dollars. But more importantly, for us, you know, one of our most significant transportation bottlenecks that we don't have real solutions to is the on-ramps to Fifty, particularly the one at Jefferson, but increasingly the one on Riverfront as well, but particularly on Jefferson. So when we say we're drawing these, if we're drawing trips off of that on-ramp, that, in large measure, that was the point of this, of this bridge. So the, it's not always simple to think of 47 as being worse than 30.
Right.
Because it is in terms of this alignment, potentially, but it's not necessarily worse that that means that we don't have utter gridlock all the way up into Jefferson.
Right.
Because people can't get on the freeway, and that balance is something that we've got to really pay attention to.
Yeah, that's excellent point. Back, I guess it was about 10 years ago, when the Jefferson interchange, there was a project study report done in traffic analysis, and fixing Jefferson interchange is complex because of all the levels and everything. And this, and even at that time, Broadway Bridge was just a concept, and, but it was recognized that it does, it does relieve Jefferson interchange. So, and part of the funding strategy could reflect that reality, so.
One quick question, and that is, estimate how many trips go east or how many trips go west? What's the, I mean, you talk about the number of autos, but which way are they headed?
Um, I don't have that with me, but I, we have, I have looked at the traffic output from our subconsult, and I, there's no unusual directional split. It's pretty 50/50.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing really unusual there.
Okay, thank you.
Next two slides. Let's advance to the next one. So this one, let's see, one of the one before this, I'm sorry. Okay, so a couple of connection alternatives here. There's actually quite a few more, but these are the, just wanted to show you two of these. So this one, if any of us were to look at this project and say, how would you connect on the West Sac side? This is kind of the most obvious. And this is the most northerly of the crossings. We've since determined that the obvious isn't as easy as it could be, because the city, of course, has some plans with the extension of Riverfront Street tying to Fifteenth. So this is one idea, and the next one is the most southerly alignment across the river, going through the Tank Farm here and tying into South River. So, of course, these two choices here really impact what we're seeing with the traffic model, how the traffic, the north-south traffic splits between Jefferson and South River. So, for example, if you were to do this one, a lot more of that traffic's going to use South River. One thing I wanted to point out here, right about where that green line is that we're showing, we have identified a Kinder Morgan petroleum line in there, so we'll be avoiding that, and we can avoid that. There's no need to affect that. Next slide. So here's a couple of the next steps just in front of us. So the total duration of the feasibility study is pretty short. It's going to be less than a year. So our next milestone is July 23rd next week. We have a public workshop, and we've got mailings, we've got folks coming out. We'll be discussing the information we've shown you here with a little bit more detail. We're putting all of our exhibits together right now. Then in the fall, we'll be coming back to you with an update in a similar format to talk about all of the findings of the draft feasibility study before it's finalized in December. And then in and around early 16, then we'd be commencing with the next phase, the environmental phase that's funded by Tiger, and, which is really a huge, huge gift. Tiger is extremely competitive, so the city should be very pleased that they were able to get that, and hopefully that bodes well for future Tiger funds for capital. And then next slide, last slide. Just, here's some of the areas that we were looking for, some feedback, some of the things we talked about tonight. I think we have some real basic guidance on what neighborhood friendly means, and it, and it was, when it was created, it was applied to all these future river crossings. And I think that anything we can do to make that more specific, to reflect the values of West Sac and SAC at this location, not at I Street or some other location, would be helpful, certainly. We don't need it right now, but certainly as we get into the environmental phase, we'll need that better direction to it, because right now, we're not evaluating alternatives, we're just creating them. But in the environmental, we'll need to be starting to make choices. So with that, any other questions, comments?
Mr. Johansson.
No.
No, sorry. Any other questions?
For me, I think that Fifteenth Street matches up best. So I think that my first blush is, is that's where I would look. I like the idea of a lift bridge, like the Tower Bridge. I would like to see some figures, though, on what's the operation and maintenance of a lift bridge versus a bridge that swings out. So, you know, those are some of the thoughts that I originally had at first blush at this workshop.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we'll be able to certainly provide that. I think, I guess, one thing to start thinking about, for example, that the vertical lift. The vertical lift can be, you know, aesthetically, it could be like Tower, very traditional. A lot of vertical lifts are just plain industrial, so need to be careful with that. There are some new vertical lifts. Our subconsultant, Hardisty and Hanover, just completed one in France. It's in the picture there. Everything's internal. You can't see any of the workings, the gears, the cables are all internal in pylons. It's a very slender deck, so there are new choices available. And I think, you know, one thing, this is a little bit maybe off-topic just slightly, but with these two new movable bridges on the river, both here and at I Street, and then the discussion about Tower Bridge, certainly this operations and maintenance, it seems to me, should really, we should start thinking programmatically and with remote operation, that you could do it all from one center. That's beyond the scope of our work, but that would, you know, reduce the cost and maintenance of operation.
Also, I think aesthetics are going to be very important. I mean, you know, it's going to be important. I think that people want to see an intriguing design of a bridge or something, you know, I don't know what it is, but I think that it would go a long ways towards people using and people being sort of proud of the bridge if those are proud.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the, I just wanted to mention one question we're going to be asking next week, that I think is a great question for the community, is what do you want this bridge to be? You know, not only what it's going to look like, but how are you going to use it? Are you going to ride on it, walk on it, and are you going to stop on it and look, you know, at the river? I mean, it's a big deal, I think, and a great opportunity for both communities to kind of put their stamp on, something that's going to be there for 100 years at least.
We also have to build it. So, I mean, we, the Bay Area did exactly that and ended up with an insanely expensive, heavily delayed bridge that doesn't work. And so, I mean, our first imperative is we need to deliver on a project that is implementable and feasible and fundable. And we can do a lot in that, in that pocket, but we do have to attend to what is accomplishable, I think, in the community. So we do have a question for the public. I do want to say just a couple of quick things first about this. The, I'm glad that we're at the, you know, with the 170-feet piece and that we're not looking towards a Pioneer alignment. I mean, we, I think we were all concerned that we'd not end up with a bridge that required a, you know, a steep landing for a variety of reasons, but principally around mobility for pedestrians, for cyclists, for wheelchairs, for, you know, for everyone to be able to easily use the facility and cross conveniently and comfortably, which would not be possible if you had to, if there was a large, you know, a large ramp to rise up and then to, you know, to avoid falling down on the other side. So that's, I think that's, it's encouraging that the options that we're looking at all involve essentially relatively accurate entrance on both sides of the river. I don't, the industrial design does not bother me if it's intentional. I mean, this is a, this is a bridge that's going to connect two historic industrial areas of the region on the river. I would prefer not to have the I Street Bridge, the new I Street Bridge and this bridge both be industrial, but I also don't want, I mean, we're proud of our industrial heritage in this community. It's been a big part of who we are and our, and our, and our culture and our workforce and everything else, so we don't run away from it. It doesn't mean everything, but everything doesn't have to be industrial either. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting it should be industrial, but I'm also suggesting, don't be afraid of industrial in a search to try to make it look like it belongs in Amsterdam. It should, it should look like it belongs in West Sacramento and Sacramento, in the area that it is, and also be affordable. and Sacramento, in, in the area that it, that it is, and, and also be affordable to, to build and to operate. And then on the neighborhood friendly pieces, we keep, as we keep deepening what that means, I know I said, I said this when we were talking about the definition back, way back then originally, but just remember the Tower Bridge, when it feels to most folks in both cities, in the, in the focus groups and the workshops that we've done, feels like a neighborhood friendly bridge. The Tower Bridge is a four-lane bridge. And so that, we have tended to think about neighborhood friendliness simply as a function of how many, how many vehicle lanes are on a bridge. And I don't, I think that's, that's, it's, it's part of the point, but it's not the whole point. And, and so although I, I don't know that I'm for, for, you know, two lanes in each direction, a bridge like Tower, I don't find Tower to be a, you know, feel like it's some sort of massive freeway that is, you know, that is impenetrable to, you know, to our local culture or to neighborhoods. And so I'm, to me, the four lanes does not automatically make it not, not neighborhood friendly. So I, I'm not helping you define what is neighborhood friendly, but maybe if we keep defining things that don't disqualify it as neighborhood friendly, we'll get a little closer to what that, that, that meaning's all about. The alignment piece, I, I, I mean, my, my intuition is with Mr. Kristoff on the alignment that connects to Fifteenth Street. There are both pluses and minuses, and that's going to be true of all possible alignments. But the, you know, part of the existential question that's going to be emerging throughout this process is how, how does the, how does this bridge relate to the existing city? And to all, and to, you know, all of the existing city. And it will be landing within feet of, of, you know, Old West Sacramento and the state streets and West Morroks neighborhoods. And the, you know, the alignment, the, the two alignments that you described, one of them leads directly to that neighborhood, which has the, you know, the potential downside of, of funneling traffic to that neighborhood. On the other hand, it has the potential upside of giving that neighborhood access, you know, more direct access to both river fronts in a, in a meaningful and powerful way. And so as we're thinking about the role of this bridge, we, we need to be thinking about its connectivity and how it's relating to all of the neighborhoods of the, of the city. It's not just a, a bridge for the Pioneer Bluffs, and it's not just a bridge for Southport. It's a bridge that needs to serve the, the, the whole city and should have an intentional relationship with the neighborhoods that are around it. We're having the same conversations in the Pioneer Bluffs planning work as well as part of our general plan. So this process doesn't need to own all of that, but it should respect what's happening in, in that. So, so the alignment piece is partly about just raw, raw traffic movement efficiency, but it also needs to pay attention to how the Pioneer Bluffs area and its circulation system and its bike and pedestrian paths and everything else connect up with the older, older parts of West Sacramento and then out both north and to the south as, as well. Ms. Andy?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I, I read with keen interest the, the input that was received by our Transportation Mobility and Infrastructure Commission, and that was included in the staff report. And there were some things, however, that, because I, it looked as if the, it wasn't, there wasn't a, a decision that came from that. You were hearing, as you are tonight, individual input from the commissioners. I, I think some of them, it looked like they had a very deep, thorough discussion and provided a lot of input. They mentioned aesthetics, I noticed. Also, this, this notion of, of having bicycle and pedestrian elements. And I, I do think that that's incredibly important to our community. And, and I imagine as we're, as we're connecting more easily in that portion of Sacramento, that that will also be something that, that we need to consider versus, you know, a huge Pioneer Bridge, and then you can easily walk down into Broadway. And I know there's a lot of redevelopment going on on the other side of the river. The other, the other piece that, that popped out to me was also this amending the neighborhood friendly bridge policy to consider traffic performance metrics. So I, I do think that that needs some, some consideration as well. But I, I was really impressed. We've just, we, you may not know this, but we've just kind of rethought our commission structure here. And it, it appears to me that this was, this was one where there was really good input from others in the community. And hopefully that's, that's been helpful to you.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, thanks for highlighting that. So what, what was the conversation about these, the, the traffic performance metrics and the neighborhood friendly policy? Mr. McCoy, what was the, what's, what's the, what's the story behind that, that comment?
Mr. Mayor, it was basically the discussion, and, and you were correct, Councilwoman Andy, that it was individual commissioners that provided their input at the meeting. One of the commissioners specifically stated that as far as the, looking at the neighborhood friendly bridge concept, it shouldn't just be the seven, six or seven criteria that were outlined when CACOG, City of West Sacramento and Sacramento were discussing the ultimate definition of neighborhood friendly as far as the river crossing study was concerned, that it's not just aesthetics. It should go beyond just saying, okay, well, a two-lane bridge is narrower and a four-lane bridge is wider and therefore, you know, less neighborhood friendly or more neighborhood friendly. It should specifically look to enhance the performance of both vehicles as well as pedestrians. And it kind of falls in line with the discussion that was had with regards to the Washington District and the overlaying of the priorities or hierarchy for the street, where you're not just giving priority to vehicles or priority to bicyclists, but you're actually looking at this hierarchy to give equal priority, or perhaps you decide you want more pedestrian priority, you know, with regard to the bridge over bicyclists, or perhaps you want more vehicle accesses compared to I Street Bridge. So what they're looking for here is specific data with regard to the traffic, not only with vehicle modeling, but also with pedestrian modeling, which was brought up. So that's something that we would be exploring, not in the feasibility analysis where we're at right now, which a lot of this is just generating the data. But later on, subsequent with the PAED phase, that's where we really start digging into the environmental aspect and really start refining the traffic models. And then at that point, we can start generating some, some hard data to show evidence that we're doing just that, showing equal priority or emphasizing pedestrian and bicycle use.
I mean, just put a finer point on this, on this neighborhood friendly designation. When, you know, this, this was an essential part of the compromise between the two cities about how to, how to proceed and to, not so much a compromise, but just to make sure we had a common understanding and expectation about how these bridges would work. But the, the focus was on the, the impacts of these bridges on the existing neighborhoods. And so the northern alignment bridge, the, the I Street Bridge replacement is connecting an existing neighborhood in West Sacramento to a brand-new neighborhood in Sacramento. So the implication of neighborhood friendly for the rail yards where they're going to be building, you know, very high densities and it's all brand-new, should have a different meaning than, than making sure that the, the new I Street Bridge does not disrupt the, you know, the health and vitality and the culture and the economy of the Broderick neighborhood where, where it lands. So that's, it's distinct. In this, for this bridge, it is, you know, with Land Park and our state streets and West Morroks neighborhoods, which are essentially one, one-half neighborhood removed in both cases from the bridge itself. The bridge not, doesn't, the bridge doesn't land in Land Park and the bridge doesn't land in Old West SAC. The bridge lands on these, you know, these old tank farms in industrial districts. So as you, as we continue to build out this concept of neighborhood friendly, it's, at least from my perspective, it was around making sure that the bridges are consistent and support the lifestyle, the pace, the scale, the noise, the traffic levels in those adjacent neighborhoods. Not that we were necessarily trying to create a cute little tiny bridge that was intent, that then had to serve, you know, very dense, right on the waterfront development that both cities had planned in, in the Riverfront Master Plan. So it's a, it's a subtle distinction, but I think it's an important one. So you, so that we're not, so we're not, we're not under or overscaling the bridge. What we're really trying to make sure is that we're not dumping thirty thousand cars onto Virginia and Fifteenth Street in West Sacramento. We're not doing the same thing in Sacramento, that we're, that the neighborhood is going to support, support and strengthen those neighborhoods and not undermine them. Okay, thanks. We do have one request to speak on this item, so thanks, staff.
Thank you.
We have additional requests. Robert Wall?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Well, after watching that presentation, I feel like the bridge is going up next week. So hopefully we're still, hopefully we're still in the research portion of that. I've lived in Southport for over ten years there. And during that time, I've realized there's a much, a great need for a bridge to evacuate citizens from south of the Barge Canal access there. Adding another fourth bridge within approximately 1.5 miles of one another, I don't think would help alleviate the traffic that people coming from Southport all have to travel north to get out of town, unless you work in Clarksburg. I don't know many people that do other than the farmers. And I think that if we had a bridge that connected to Sutterville, either Lake Washington or Linden, it would connect this city to Land Park directly. It would connect us to the zoo, to City College, where people can ride their bikes to City College. And it would connect, you know, one of the most prominent neighborhoods in Sacramento with the new housing developments that are planned for Liberty or whatever the development is now. That's, that's going to be planned down in further south. So I'd like to, you know, hope that the city council takes into consideration all the traffic congestion, evacuation routes in case there's emergency. Everybody in the city's going to be heading north to get out of town. That won't work. And really bring to the table some other ideas on how we could connect to Sutterville and work with the city of Sacramento in doing that. And one last thing, also connect us directly to I-5 for all those people who live, work in Elk Grove and live and work here in West Sacramento. I think that would also leave any traffic here for us. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so now we'll return to the, I'll give mine, but I'd love to return to council for further discussion or questions. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I, maybe just. Maybe just to respond a little bit to the, the comment. I was, attended some of the very first kind of scoping meetings. This was probably three years ago. They were doing these over at the zoo across the river. And you got to be careful what you wish for because I know just looking at the models connecting, well, there's a couple of problems with getting it further south. And of course, it takes two partners to do something like this. But connecting it directly to I-5, it just creates a nightmare of cut-through for, to West Sacramento. So, and I, I do know there's a lot of concern about public safety and, you know, we should have our evacuation plan online. And we've stressed it over the years to make sure people know where to go. But it's, it's a heavy, heavy lift to get it any farther than we are right now. And I know we've all tried and looked at the options for years, but, you know, this, this looks like it's going to be at least one that everybody can agree on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's a single person that's ever moved into West Sacramento that hasn't had the same opinion. At least, at least folks who've moved into, you know, areas south of, south of the freeway. But there are all the, all the, there, it's an impossible project and it's, in some ways, it's almost certainly an undesirable project. So it was removed from our, our plans several years ago and as part of the agreements on all these other bridges for a couple of reasons. One is the, the connection of a bridge at Sutterville either has to land in Land Park or it has to land at I-5 or both. And Caltrans has declared it absolutely under no circumstances would allow such a connection to I-5 because the I-5 coming into downtown is one of their worst bottlenecks in the entire region. And so adding more people onto, onto that bottleneck is not, they, they won't approve it. So Caltrans won't allow a connection to I-5. Land Park will not allow a, a connection to Land Park. And so you, we, we would have to, we would have to ask folks to drive very fast and then leap over the, the river in order for that to be accomplished. But I think, but the more important challenge, although that one's pretty, pretty severe, not, not being able to, to build the other half of the bridge, was that when we did, when CACOG, the regional agency, did the, the modeling on traffic patterns that would result, and this is what Mr. Johansson was getting at, that it showed, you know, I think tens of thousands of trips that would be diverted from I-5 through West Sacramento by cars, but mainly trucks, that were seeking to avoid the I-5 US-50 bottleneck and could instead connect to Highway 80 or connect back to I-5 through Highway 80 by leaving Interstate 5 North, crossing over the Sutterville Bridge, and then going down Linden or Lake Washington, depending on what the alignment was, to the Industrial Boulevard Bridge and up onto, on, on to Interstate 80. And so it would convert Linden or Lake Washington in Southport effectively into a freeway. And that simply wasn't an, an outcome that was desirable for the, for that neighborhood. That, you know, the, the prospect of 10,000 trucks coming through was not, was not desirable. So for both feasibility reasons and kind of unintended consequences reasons, that project has, has been deemed by essentially all the partners as, as an infeasible, as an infeasible one. So that this project stowed alone, because we had, we had actually considered all of these bridges together, but this project has been able to get support from Caltrans, the city of Sacramento, plus the federal, the, the federal government in terms of the Tiger grant. So it's our best, our best shot to try to contribute to that solution. I would point out the city manager's also proposed to us that we consider restarting work in the long term on the Enterprise Bridge, which would provide an additional, if, you know, successful, that would provide an additional exit for, for Southport as well on completion. That's, that's a long ways out, but that's a potential additional solution in addition to the bridge that we just completed, the widening of the Jefferson Bridge and the, and the future widening of the industrial, of the Palma Medeszi Bridge. Any further comments or discussion on item 24? You have sufficient feedback?
I appreciate the, the feedback that we received, and I think that'll be sufficient for us to continue on with our studies. So thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Right, that brings us to item 25, which is consideration of an update on the city's water conservation efforts and authorization to make specific modifications to the city's water use policies.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Purpose of this report is to provide you an update on our conservation efforts, as the mayor just stated, and to gain authorization for the city manager to ease some of our water use restrictions. While there's a lot of information in my agenda report, I'd like to focus my presentation tonight on the outdoor watering restrictions and how we got to where we are today. In August 2014, the city implemented our stage-two water use restrictions from our Water Shortage Contingency Plan, and that was in response to the state's emergency drought regulations. When we did that implementation, it moved us to a mandatory three-day-per-week watering schedule. And we found that with those reductions in place, we only were able to get to an 18% reduction as compared to 2013. In May of 2015, the state adopted new regulations that placed us in a tier where we have to now meet 28% reductions. At that point, staff felt that stage-two wouldn't get us to that point and brought an item to the council on May 6, asking for authorization or the city manager's authority to go to stage-three. And as you are well aware, stage-three includes a one-day-per-week watering restriction, a restriction on pool, pool filling and refilling, as well as not using potable water in outdoor ornamental landscape, or I'm sorry, outdoor ornamental ponds and water features. So, I'm sorry, regardless of whether or not the, the outdoor water features have a recirculating system. Recently, there was a discussion at the May 20th council meeting where some of the members of the council has asked staff to evaluate our, our reductions. And if the reductions exceed our expectations, to determine if we could lessen up some of our restrictions. We've done that since that time. And since we have reached a 40% reduction for the month of June and appear to be on track for 40% for the month of July, we did an evaluation of our, all of these restrictions and tried to determine which would have the least impact on meeting our 28% reduction goal. We determined that the least impact would be three things. The use of potable water in ornamental fountains, period. So we would move to instead allowing that as long as they have a recirculating system, and that's in align with the state's regulation. Second, that pool filling and refilling actually only are, result in about a hundredth of a percent of our annual water production. So we determined that was not really that big of a, an impact to our overall reductions. And that we could add an additional day just for drip and hand watering, since that's more efficient than allowing an additional day for spray irrigation. Since spray irrigation does have a higher evaporative loss and doesn't have as, as efficient, we don't feel that it's a good time to move to, just moving to two days per week. And that instead having a compromise of the drip and hand watering of trees would help maintain those resources, the trees and shrubs that provide shade and a natural habitat for birds and insects that are pollinators and things of that nature. We also are asking the council to allow the manager to move forward with a potential two days per week if we continue to have, exceeding our expectations. At this point, it's too early to tell. That's why we are asking for that, you know, for a future, for a future authorization. But at this time, I would make the recommendation that the current water use restrictions be modified to allow those uses I described. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Just a clarification. So you, you had said that on fountains, we're not allowing them now, and you're asking to allow them, or?
Allow them as long as they have a recirculating system.
Correct.
Which is in align with what the state's regulation is.
And you're asking to continue that. Is that right?
Well, to, right now, our regulation is that you may not use potable water in a fountain regardless if they have a recirculating system or not.
Okay.
So basically, you would just have a dry fountain or a pond or ornamental water feature. So now what we're asking is that we would allow potable water in those systems that have a recirculating system.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then the other one is to allow, to can you continue, I should say, continue to allow refilling of pools. refilling of pools.
Filling of new pools.
Kind of maintain them.
Right.
On their natural or their system, refilling system, right?
Yeah, we're asking that, that we ease back on that restriction, allow new pools to be filled and existing pools to be refilled if needed.
Okay.
And just a question, the refilling of the existing pools, the recommendation would be, is that consistent with what we've been allowing as kind of the topping up of pools? Because I know that that was what we had allowed. So it would be refilling, it would be filling new and then continuing with the topping up, essentially? Because I, when I think of refilling, I think of if you drain your whole pool and then you refill it fresh. And so I just, I'm not, I think that maybe perhaps needs some clarification.
That is what we're talking about, is actually if you had to drain your pool, for example, for a crack or something of that nature, that you'd be able to refill it.
Okay.
The restriction in the past was that we could maintain levels with just that, you know, the, the day-to-day filling that you need to do to maintain the, your existing levels, but not a full refill.
Okay.
All right, thank you. We have a couple of requests to speak on this item.
Okay.
The first is by Mike Villauer. There you are.
Hello, Mayor and councilpeople or councilmen. Yeah, I wanted to speak just for a few minutes on, and urge you to consider continuing the current water restrictions. As far as the pool, I mean, for example, I've been having these discussions because if you, for those who don't me, I'm the rain barrel guy for the city of West Sacramento, so I'm trying to get folks to conserve as much as possible whenever they can. And I've actually been very proud to say that we've gone to once a week to those other cities who are still at three, for example. If the scientists at NASA are correct and we have less than a year's worth of water, which based on all the recent numbers I've seen indicates that that's the case, 28% is a drop in the bucket, to use the pun, I'm thinking we should be focusing on 50%, which is very doable. And that would mean getting rid of lawns, I mean particularly, because most of these lawns are, there are plenty of them right now are dying and I want to, first off, commend the city for doing a great job with shutting off a lot of the water because much of the gains, as you can drive around and see, is from city property not being watered. But we still have folks that are still not even following the guidelines at once a week. And they weren't following them when they were twice a week. Every day I drive and I'm not throwing anybody on the bus, but there was even a couple of pools that were drained and refilled the last couple of weeks. So folks are still, I mean, we have a majority of folks that are following the guidelines, but there's still a lot that aren't. And the bottom line, as far as the drought, there is very little water. Maybe West Sacramento is better than most. But we should take this opportunity, which is what I believe it is, and you are touting all the things that West Sacramento's, or Sacramento's can be proud of. This is the moment, I think, that we can stand alone. We're the only city in this region to have once a week. When you drive around, there's folks with pretty green lawns in other parts of the region, which obviously means they're not following their guidelines. But if we can take this opportunity to get people to remove their lawns, you know, pools are great, but, you know, as was just mentioned, as far as some of the, the water evaporation, for example, with pools, that's about 16,000 gallons over the course of a year. That's a lot of water. And that's not filling it up after it's been drained, that's just the evaporation. And another area is, I mean, as far as some of the plants that we have used, I mean, especially the, the cool water turf that we use, it's from the east coast or back east where they have a lot of rain. But anyway, my time is up and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And Pat Flint?
I'll, okay.
All right, so those are all the requests that we have to speak on this item. Return to the council, Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, I, I'm supportive of this and it's, you know, I understand that, you know, we are in a good position because we've been able to conserve so much. You know, I, I'm not really concerned about lawns that much in terms of increasing to two days a week. I think, you know, people are going to be planting new lawns at some point or doing something else with the yards after the season's over and depending on how this winter goes. But one of my concerns are trees and things that are harder to establish because we are a tree city, designated as a tree city. So we want to do what we can to help preserve that because, you know, mature trees are very hard to replace. And so I think with your proposal, our staff's proposal to allow hand watering, and that's great, and assuming that's going to be hand watering and not allowing the water to run off, that's, that's part of what it is. And then in terms of drip, you know, even zero scape unless, unless it's no scape, you know, zero scape really is plants that need water, so drip is very efficient to do that. And as people start looking at replacing lawns with some type of zero scape kind of thing, you know, it would help to know that, particularly if they're going to try and establish something, you need a bit of water more early on than that. So I'm, I'm comfortable with this. I'm not sure about, you know, the filling in swing pools. I know we had some testimony at a past meeting on whether, you know, you know, square yard of grass has the same evaporation level as a square yard of the pool. I don't know if we've ever gotten to the bottom of that, but it's probably not all that important at this point. But, so I, you know, I do, I do hear, hear the comments about, you know, taking the lead in this, and I think we have, we've shown some gains on that. We're coming up with a couple of hottest months of the year. So it's going to be important that, you know, everything just doesn't die completely and I think this allows, you know, things to hang on until it starts cooling off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the, the recommendations before us. I, I want to commend the citizens and the city. We have done really a remarkable job of exceeding what was, what we thought was a very stringent reduction. And I, I really want to commend folks. We really are, you know, we're hearing on the radio and around that we're going golden and I, the streets of West Sac seem golden right now. I also, there are a number of things in the report, I know you couldn't walk through all of, all of the pieces, but just in terms of the creativity of our city staff, one of, I think one or maybe more members found access to reclaimed water that we could use to irrigate city trees and shrubs. And those kinds of actions, I think, I think matter a lot. Also, looking at what, what is ahead of us, we are losing some, some trees, we've had, we've had, I think some, some of the plantings in the city are, have been, in the past, have been very kind of water dependent. And so the plan that, to replace those when the time comes with more drought tolerant plants, I think is, is the, the direction that, that we should be moving. I did have, I did have some questions. I read, I read in the report very carefully about the transition plans that may be underway for moving from flat billing to metered billing. And it was kind of mentioned that we may be moving in that direction quickly. And so I think we need to think how we will get folks ready for that. I know that we're not completely metered and that came to us in an earlier item tonight, getting some more of the, the city metered. But I think how, how we communicate about that to, to prepare the folks. And I think folks have been asking, I mean, I've been hearing people want to have a better way to look at, kind of self-regulate their, their actions and to kind of see a benefit personally, you know. I think there's citywide numbers, but then folks want to know what, how am I doing? And so being able to regulate that. But I think that's something that we, we would probably need to hear more about. And then the notifying the hotels, I know we still kind of have some work to do there. So I did, I did read very carefully. I had another question that maybe for a different time, but I've been approached and being asked about, so we're reducing, I'm having to give up my lawn or what, you know, these issues, but now I see that we have other development in the city. So I think we need to be really sensitive about the kinds of things we put in place when we're looking at new development here regarding the kinds of ways in which we manage our water resource, our limited water resource when we're contemplating additional, adding additional houses or retail or industry. But in terms of the recommendation before us, I, I think I really hear, I went to Mike the Water Barrel, I have one installed now, I, I hear that, I can hear that concern. I, I do think people, we have to be really careful because folks have really stepped up. At the same time, if we can just allow a little bit, perhaps just, just not, as you said, full retail watering the lawns, but we can give a little bit and so some folks can have some of the, the shrubs that maybe can last with an extra additional mid-week, week watering. I think, I think we do, we're in kind of a transition and I, I do think the, the future sounds dire. So I think, but I think we, we need to, to at least consider loosening this, but also maintaining a very close watch on how we're doing. And I think, and we are doing well and I'd love to see that, we need to see that continue.
Mayor Protemla Desma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the update and the staff report on kind of where we are. And I, with my colleague, Sandy, commend the city, both residents and the city itself for doing a great job of conserving water. I think it's, we've been saying it for some time, we have been leading the region to, to a large degree in terms of our restrictions, but our, more importantly, residents are starting to respond and we're seeing it. Our city has responded by the, in water saving. So I appreciate all the work on, on kind of where we are. I certainly understand the points made by Mr. Villauer on, on sort of where we are, on noticing that some folks in, in the city aren't quite grasping the concept that we're in a drought at this point. And I'm not sure by restricting or, or, I'm not sure if we just, what's going to, what is going to take more restrictions or whatnot to kind of get them to a point, get folks to a point where we, we get to view water differently, our water usage. To me, that's sort of what, what we're trying to do is change some behaviors and thoughts and how we approach water usage in our own homes, how we approach it in our city, from landscaping to how we take showers, to how we do whatever we, we use water. It's just, it's become a different ideal or concept in how we use it. And I think the water restrictions we have in place have been effective in sort of sending a message that we, we're in a crisis. And I think that is important to send, that this is a, a water crisis and there's no guarantees that it's going to rain or more importantly, snow in the winter months and we have to prepare for that. I'm supportive of where you're going with this and trying to, try to find opportunities where maybe we can give back. I don't think pool permits have, because you're proposing that we allow the filling of pools, I don't think pool permits have slowed down. We've been issuing them for new pools, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so I'm sure folks are still constructing pools and they're magically filling it up, I guess, over the summer months so they can be used. And we don't have an environment, and I don't encourage an environment in the city where we are casing lawns or, or landscaping or home projects to see what they're doing to be water-wise. And I'm not, that's not the environment, I don't think we intended. We do want to make sure folks are aware of the restrictions we have and hopefully they're thoughtful about their uses of water. But I'm cautious of that one, but I know we're still issuing permits and it seems illogical that we would say you can't fill them, but you can have a permit. So that, and if it isn't resulting in the pool usage or in, in that substantial water usage, then that's, that's your call. But I don't want to send the message of we're easing up. That is one thing I don't want to do. We're just continuing to, to amend the restrictions we have or tweak them as we go, as we learn about what are the water usages. That's what, to me, that's what this is about. I think sort of, what, I think the message is, it's clear and by what we see in our daily lives, talk to folks and, and we see it on social media, people are still, again, noticing folks that have green lawns or doing whatever. We need, there is a message we're trying to get out and we still need to continue to lead through that, to make sure people are aware we're on a water crisis, that we take our role in that very seriously. The city has set the example, some residents have set the example. We need to keep setting those examples and keep leading through that. There's always folks that just take a while to get there. And so that's what I urge, so we, I don't want to position this as we're, we're easing up, we're making some refinements to our policies to do that. But I don't want to send a message that we are easing up because we're, we shouldn't. We're still on a water crisis. It hasn't rained, I guess it sprinkled a few weeks last week, but it hasn't rained substantially to put, to end the droughts or the snow hasn't come yet. So I just want to make sure we continue making that point, being good stewards of the resource that, that we have. Because a lot of companies are making sacrifices, a lot of our city's making sacrifices. I know the Washington Unified School District has been making sacrifices to try to curb water usage. So again, that's, that's the message I just want to make sure we're sending with these refinements. So I appreciate the update and I'm supportive of it. Thank you.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, I too would, I certainly would like to commend the citizens of West Sacramento for doing whatever they're doing because, you know, 40% reduction from last year in June, 40% reduction last year in July. I commend the city for the water-saving devices and all the other things. And the same thing goes for the schools. Schools have a lot of area that they need to water. And they've been doing a very, very good job of conserving and making whatever little water they have last or make it work. That's not to say that it can go through August. You got, we've got half of July, which is hot, August, which is really hot. And September, it starts to change a little bit, but it's still very, very warm. And we use a lot of water. So, but I mean, I, I think that we have said all along that if we do really well at conservation and re-use and things like that, we can maybe tweak it a little bit. And that's what I think you've done. And I think you've found a, a, a pretty good point, so to speak, as far as a drip system or whatever it may be. It just, it hasn't gone full-blown to, you can water three days a week. And so I like the way that you're trying to tweak things and just take it very incrementally. Because I think we have been a leader. The city of West Sacramento by the policy of one day has been a leader, but I don't know if we can even sustain that all the way through. So I would really, I like the idea of tweaking it a little bit like you've done and making sure we get a report back, making sure we have the opportunity to talk to the public. And I know that you're doing something in the utility bills so that it shows some of the savings and, and it shows some of the kinds of conservation measures that we have done. So I feel really good about that. But at the same time, I do think that, as Mr. Ledesma says, we need to be vigilant. But at the same time, I think we can just sort of maybe soften the blow a little bit. Take, take it very, very slowly, one step at a time.
All right, so I, I agree with all my colleagues on the reasoning, but not the conclusion. I think I, I, I don't think it's possible to adopt a series of rollbacks and not send the message that we think the problem is less than it was. I just don't, I don't think that's, that's a possible outcome in, in any, any kind of social psychology for us to say, yes, it's, it continues to be a serious challenge and we are rolling back restrictions in several, in several areas. We have had, we've had very dramatic conservation over the, since we adopted these restrictions 60 days ago. You know, 60 days out of a, out of a drought that's now been extending for a couple of years. And the months prior to that, we had months where our level of conservation was tailing the region and we were conserving less than 10%. And so now we're, we've had 60 days of conservation at the 39, 38, 40% level and it's impressive and we should be very proud of it. And it was accomplished in part because it was a clear message with our stage three restrictions that this is a serious challenge and all of us have to step up to help contribute to it. And I, I've just, I'm more, I think I'm just, I'm more skeptical that we can, we can convey both of those messages simultaneously. I also worry about the, just the equity dimensions of it, of, of this approach. I also worry about the, just the equity dimensions of it, of, of this approach. The, this is not uncommon in a democracy where the interests of a small number of people who are more vocal can sometimes swamp the interests of the large, there are many, there are thousands, thousands, maybe tens of thousands of residents in our city who have, who, who are interested in outdoor watering because of their yards of whatever composition. But they're everywhere and they're all of us in some, in some respects. And in this proposal, they don't, they, they get very little relief. But the very small number of vocal folks who are, you know, the small number of vocal folks who are not representative of the entire city who are building pools get complete relief in, in this proposal. It just doesn't feel right to me that we're, that we're, that we're saying, yes, the law, the, the yard that you already have, you, you, you may, you may, you may be at risk of losing and, you know, as August heat gets worse, you may lose the lawn that you already have. And yet the council, you know, we're, we are allowing somebody to create a brand-new pool and collectively consume a half a million gallons of water per year in, in, as a result of relaxing that pool restriction. And that, it just doesn't sit right with me in terms of the equity of how we're approaching that issue. You know, all, all else being equal, which it is not, but all else being equal, I would rather deal with the outdoor watering restriction that, that most citizens in the city face first before tackling the, the, the more specific issues of brand-new swimming pools. So I, it's not that I, that I think this, this restriction is, is, is great or that it's perfect or that it should be permanent. I just, to me, this feels premature in terms of the campaign that we're trying to lead in the community around restrictions. And I'd almost like to see, you know, the, the interests of the many with respect to watering more generally be married to the, to the restrict, to the interests of the, of the few with respect to the swimming pool. So in, in this proposal, we have a, a trigger that in, you know, in August, if the, if water conservation continues at these, at these historic, but also heavily unusual levels, then the city manager would have the authority to allow additional outdoor watering. We could have done, or we still could do the same thing with the pools. It's at the, and in that same period, if we continue this sixty-day, sixty days of success and it starts, and we're proving to ourselves that we're actually changing our, our practices and our behavior and our water usage permanently, then the same trigger will apply there. So I, I would be more comfortable with that, that approach than, than moving forward on pools now and telling the vast majority of residents who have yards that they have to, that they have to wait because we're dealing with pools first. And I get, it's not all else being equal because even a half a million gallons of water for the pools is not the same as outdoor, as outdoor watering. But the, but the, this, just the symmetry of that, of that, of that equation troubles me a bit. So I, 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 there's nothing that my colleagues have said that I don't agree with around, around the, the logic of some of this and the, and the accomplishments of the residents and the businesses and the school district and the city operations themselves in terms of contribution to the, to our conservation targets. But I just, for me, it's premature to start, to roll back these restrictions and these restrictions alone.
All right, with that, if there's no further discussions, there are a motion that I have in twenty-five.
Need a motion?
Yes, if there does require a motion.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah. Are you going to modify the pools or?
Oh, I was, I was counting already. Oh. I didn't want to, I, I mean.
Well, let me ask before, before, I was gonna make a motion, but let me ask the city staff. I'm not, I'm supportive. Don't sit down.
My favorite.
So my, my issue with the pool, swimming pool. And I hesitate to say it, but I'm just gonna say it. We, we, by putting in a ban or putting in non-filling of, of water, of pools and still issuing permits, those two policy, city policies are incongruent. They don't relate. We don't want them to use water.
The pool, I'm sorry, the, the.
Unless there's an alternative that we're offering of some sort or that is available that I'm unaware of, that's the issue for me. We're issuing pool permits, which is an invitation for folks to fill pools and do it with the auspice of committing some, you know, I mean, let's take away the, the sense of where we are in a, in a drought situation and not kind of thinking that through in terms of the water usage. But I'm just trying to get a, a sense of what, from a policy, we're just, policy level, we're gonna, I'm supportive of this, let them through, but is there other alternatives that homeowners have to fill a pool?
When the, when a permit is applied for and, and actually provided, they actually have to guarantee that they get the water from another source. And then our city staff inspectors actually verify that the water did not come from the city's supply. What that means, they have to bring in water from somewhere else. One pool manufacturer told me that he had a, well, it wasn't a pool manufacturer, it was another pressure washer had a well and that's what he was using was well water and not city water.
Okay. Okay. I would encourage that we still promote alternatives using our potable drinking water somehow incorporate into that because that's the, the water we, we exercise, our, our capital facility to clean and bring in water for drinking purposes. So if there's other methods to bringing it in, if there's a way to sort of thread that needle and from a policy perspective of how do you get folks to use alternative sources versus just turn it on the tap, where, that, that would be what I, what I would recommend go along with the motion that I'm about to make. So with that, I will move the recommended action with the, in direction to, to staff to continue to promote ways to alternatively fill, fill pools, to not use the potable water we are, taking resources to, to clean and deliver to customers for drinking and usage.
So if I could clarify, so that, that motion is the staff's report, striking the pool reduction or pool restriction lifting?
I think what I'm saying is, is that I'm, I wasn't gonna strike it. I was gonna let that go, but it, if there's a way to, I'm trying to figure out the way to, to almost do both. Is there a way to, I don't know how you do that, but we, we don't want using the city's tap water for filling the pools should be a, a secondary option almost of, I'm not sure, I'm making my point clear, but we're, we're still trying to send a message that we don't, we want to discourage, I was, maybe I'll stop or, to remind folks that we're in a drought and using a tap water for that purpose. And we've set that level, it hasn't stopped people from building pools and pool permits and we've, it sounds like we've created a way to get an alternative source to them or at least tell them to get an alternative source, so.
Another option is that, is to work with the pool building industry on conservation messaging, perhaps requiring pool covers upon installation, just focusing on conservation of the water that they are using for their pool. Because there are certain tips that we can provide to pool owners that help conserve water.
Okay.
Yeah, for the, for the, for the objection I'm raising to it, I wouldn't, I would encourage, you know, encourage you not to, not to overcomplicate it.
No, I'm not, I don't.
To me, the issue will be if, if we vote and it's reported that we have relaxed the restriction on pools, no matter what else is underneath it, it's not, it's, it's the ultimate top-level message. So, you know, I, I can see you're, you're, you know, going at a great pace to try to, you know, figure out how to find a, find a way, but I think, you know, it's, to me, it might be cleaner to.
You made your point. Yep, I'm gonna move, then the action is recommended and, and is recommended, but again, continue to have staff find ways to kind of keep the pedal on, so to say. The recommendations are fine, but we do need to continue finding ways to, to, to send the message. So that's my motion.
Second?
I'll second that. I didn't understand. What was it?
I'm keeping it as is. I'm keeping the staff recommendation as is.
All right, no further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, no, the motion carries. Thank you. All right, that brings us then to council calendar. Mr. Richardson, welcome back.
Thank you very much. It's good to be back. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to point out a couple of items that are not on the calendar. This Friday at nine AM at Bright Park, the Joe Two Three Eight Foundation is going to dedicate a memorial bench in honor of Officer Joe Therese. Pat Flint's son actually started this particular foundation. Officer Therese was a friend of his. He was a former Sacramento police officer, but a resident of West Sacramento. And apparently him, he was a big Disney fan, so the, the foundation thought it would be appropriate to dedicate a memorial bench in his honor. That's gonna be this Friday at nine AM at, at the Bright Park near the playground. A couple other items, on August fourth is, is National Night Out. Some more information will be coming forth from the Police Department on that as usual. And on August twelfth, Shin May is gonna have their grand opening event at ten o'clock in the morning. There'll be a celebration dinner that evening. And there was some information going back and forth regarding the Farm to Fork Dinner that's gonna be held on September twenty-seventh and more information will be coming forth to you on that. But those are just a few items I wanted to bring to your attention that weren't on the calendar.
All right, any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Just briefly, Jason McCoy mentioned a memo that we put before you on the street car. The policy steering committee meets on July twenty-ninth at three-thirty and then staff is working on a workshop for August nineteenth on the street cars that relates to the vehicle workshops that are gonna be held in the community. We'll come back to the council. Lots of questions have been asked about the environmental review process and the funding of the street cars that relates to Sacramento's size. We've got a quick summary there and we'll have more information at the August nineteenth council meeting.
All right, any questions? City manager report? City attorney report?
Report.
All right, staff direction from members of the council? Mr. Kristoff?
We used to have flags along West Capitol Avenue that flew every July fourth, Independence Day. And I don't know what happened to all of, all of that. I mean, I realize there was, there was somebody that did put up flags in, in the southport portion of our city and, but he did that on Veterans Day, I think. And this was, we used to do this on Fourth of July and I just wondered.
Yeah, I could speak to that.
What happened?
The, the memorial flag plaza that goes up and down West Capitol there, different service groups were assigned different days to put the flags up. And the particular service group that was supposed to do it this last Fourth of July, other, they dropped the ball somehow. So what we're doing is we're implementing a practice now of trying to remind the contact person before each holiday so those flags will go up. So we have a, a fail-safe method on that. We got, people missed them. We got, we got a few, a few inquiries about it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I received an airfall with that.
All right, Ms. Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if this is actually D or E, but I just had a, a question about whether it's staff direction from council members or agenda item requests. I just had a question about the recognition we're giving to former commission members. And I've noticed that, I think we've now recognized most of the folks who were in like Parks and Rec related commissions, but I think, I think we still maybe need to recognize perhaps planning commissioners who had left. And I'm not sure, I just haven't tracked it all, so I, I'm just not sure if there's other folks who.
Why don't we take a look at that list and see if we missed anybody?
That'd be great, yeah. Because, yeah, people served, I think, for a long time and it'd be great to recognize their service. Thanks.
Okay. Great, no other staff direction? All right, so future agenda request, we have one, there's no staff report on this one, so we'll go directly to the, we had a couple of public comment requests on this item. The first is by Cheryl Castorina. And she'll be filed by Maria Gravava, so just to get ready. Welcome.
Okay. Good evening. At the 2015 State of the City address, the mayor spoke of warning, wanting to make the city of West Sacramento a charter city. And on today's agenda, number twenty-six, in a memorandum from the city manager title with a request by the mayor to the council to consider scheduling a future agenda item to discuss the potential of drafting a city charter for presentation to the voters. LULAC thirty-two oh four opposes West Sacramento being changed from a general law city to a charter city through the adoption of a charter and would like to voice our concerns as follows. A charter city gives the council majority supreme authority and removes the residents from the democratic process. There are two types of cities in California, general law city and charter city. A general law city is bound by the state's general law regardless of whether the subject concerns a municipal affair. A charter city has supreme authority over municipal affairs. Because a charter city is not required to follow the same rules as a, as a general law city, a charter city has the power to raise local taxes and fees, local politicians can increase their take-home pay and impose unlimited penalties on residents. Furthermore, a charter city is not required to pay prevailing wages on publicly funded municipal construction projects and have no competitive bidding. Removing the voice of West Sacramento residents on such critical decisions and making supreme authority to the council majority is not the West Sacramento way. As a charter city, as a charter city, local politicians can manipulate election laws because they are not bound by the California election code and could also manipulate the bound, boundaries of the council districts if they choose the district election method. This tends to keep incumbents in office and can make it harder for minorities to get elected. West Sacramento is a city for the people, by the people, and of the people. And for these reasons, we offer the city council's efforts in changing from a general law city to a charter city. We have a flyer that we have over there for everybody and we're, we're gonna have a meet and greet for the community and everybody is invited on Saturday, the eighteenth from twelve to two. It's gonna be at ten twenty-five Anna Street, West Sacramento, nine five six oh five. And we're gonna discuss one of the charts that you presented to us where it lays out the difference between two, the two cities and just educate the community because a lot of people don't even realize there's two types of cities, so they don't know what we're talking about.
Thank you. All right, Maria Gravava and she'll be filed by Carlos Akala.
Greetings.
That's incredibly uncomfortable for you. There's a button right at your right.
And it does what?
It'll bring the whole podium to you. It's magic. It's our favorite thing about this chamber.
Okay. My name is Maria Gravava and item twenty-six E is the last item on this agenda. And one would think that the method of presenting this agenda item is not very transparent. This is a request from the mayor to discuss a possible formation of a city charter committee. And, and it takes us to attachment one, which is dated June the twelfth, and it proposes this, a city charter. And it also includes a second attachment, which is a sample of an adopted charter, which is that of the city of Folsom. So this very, very last item is actually a thirty-page attachment. And such an item is not small. And so anyone would think that maybe it's being hidden. That's the impression that I get. So given this, given this was dated back in June twelfth, it, I think it triggers the Brown Act because at some point, any time more than three of you speak on a subject or, or as such as this, you're required to involve the public. That's my understanding. It might, it might not be correct. It might be more. But anyway, there's been no public discussion about this and this is about it right now. I think this is actually step one. And then step two would be the strong mayor initiative. In your State of the City address. as this, you're required to involve the public. That's my understanding. It might not be correct. It might be more. But anyway, there's been no public discussion about this, and this is about it right now. I think this is actually step one. And then step two would be the strong mayor initiative. In your State of the City address, Mr. Mayor, you were very proud about how things get things done around here, how you get things done around here. I don't think you called it fast-tracking. I think you called it the West Sacramento way. I think a civil rights attorney might have a red flag and say it's more like a, not a democratic way. But anyway, creating a charter is a bad, bad news. The San Diego Grand Jury cited that abuses due to concentration of powers have been the reason charters have to be amended. The cities of Industry, Bell, and Vernon are charter cities where abuses led to criminal charges and jail time. Now, I think, Mr. Mayor, with your tendencies to fast-track, it wouldn't take much to play with fire. And so, I don't think you should subject yourself to having that much authority. Because we have a human tendency to grab power. And so, hiding it at the very last, as a very last item would be indicative of something like that. And so, it's my opinion that we do not need a city charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Akala, who will be followed by Pat Flint.
Thank you, and hello to each of you. I represent the Dolores Worth, the Latino Democratic Club. Some of you are familiar with the club. We participated in elections as far away as San Diego, Los Angeles, Fresno. We made approximately 7,000 voter contacts in the mayoral race in San Diego and about 5,000 in Fresno. The club is based principally in West Sacramento. We are very opposed to the charter city concept. And we are very opposed for a number of reasons. First of all, this place has been around for 28 years, and the state's been around for 165 years or so. Seventy-five percent of the cities in California are not charter cities. Seventy-five percent of them are general law cities. The general law protects the voters from abuses. When those abuses are lifted is where the problems have occurred. She had a citation to a number of cities that encountered problems. And I'm not saying that you would encounter the same. But I will say that all the cities she mentioned were cities that became charter cities. Bell became a charter city, I believe, in 1985, 1995, right in there. And they were indicted within just a few years of that. What happened there is when they removed the legislative restrictions on setting salaries, the city manager set his pension at 1.5 million. He proceeded to set his salary at half a million. And then the city council set their salaries at 100,000, just under 100,000. The results were an indictment of everybody. I don't need to go further into the city of Bell. It's a city that's well-known. The same sort of thing happened in Vernon. The same sort of thing happened in Industry. There's a reason why 75% of the cities in this state have elected to stay as general law cities. Now, if that were the only defect, we would say, well, maybe we could look out for that. But it isn't the only defect. There are other things that happened in all these cities. For example, state law has restrictions that require competitive bidding. When you go to a charter city, you eliminate that restriction. You can have non-competitive bidding. No competition. It's just tempting. It's something that shouldn't be. And then I have to ask you this. Why do you have to do it? I'm out of time. But thank you very much for extending me the courtesy of letting me speak to you.
Thank you for being here, Carlos. Pat Flint?
Well, this was the main reason I came tonight. And then I started looking at the agenda and couldn't stop myself. Charters have not been shown to save cities any real money. Instead, they have shown to invite corruption and sometimes lead to bankruptcy because of the latitude local politicians have when they write their own rules. This agenda's been a really good example tonight of what I feel a charter city would go out of control here. We're borrowing against future revenues. In other words, we're financing a streetcar on revenues from future Measure V funding. This leads to what Bill mentioned earlier, trust issues. Taxpayers seem to be paying the brunt of the streetcar here in West Sacramento and getting the least amount of mileage out of it. And in this agenda, there's all kinds of hidden financing for that streetcar. SECOG's financing part of it. The feds are financing part of it. We're financing a great deal part of it as taxpayers. So, the trust comes when you say we have democratic choice. We don't even have a voice right now because we can't dialogue with you in an open session. We have no voice. Creative wording, you guys are great at that. And you have to really dig for what you really are doing and what you're trying to tell us that you're not doing. And that's been happening for many years here. You will say one thing, creatively write it a different way so that the outcome is completely different than what we were told we were going to have. Charter is not for West Sacramento. I'm sorry. We're having enough problems of our own with infrastructure, with safety issues. And I can go on and on and on. But this agenda just proved it tonight. Don't even bring it back.
Thank you. All right. So, this is under our Future Item Request item. The Future Item Request is our mechanism by which members of the council request an item to be on an agenda. So, this is not an agenda item for consideration this evening. This is our normal procedure. It comes at the end because it's not an actual agenda item. It was distributed to the council on June 12th, but it wasn't in printed agenda. And to make sure that it was fully transparent, we delayed this item from June 12th to today. So, there could be in writing that everyone would have a copy in advance. This would be step one of about 500 steps for this issue to be considered. But I appreciate the, personally appreciate the folks who've come out because they've raised some of the issues that are normally raised in this process. But let me take a step backwards. The request, because this is not a request to ask the council to vote for a charter, but simply to initiate the process of consideration leading up to, if the council chose to, put a proposal in front of the voters, the voters have the say, would have the say at whatever election the charter was submitted, to decide whether they wanted to proceed or not. And at that point, they would have the full text of the charter. There'd be a robust debate, as there always is in our community, about whether that charter is good for the town or not. And the voters would make that decision, not the five of us. And in the fundamental respect, the charter is the way for the voters of, and no changes can be made to the charter, other than what the voters have approved as well. So, the charter is the most important mechanism for the voters to exercise control of their city government. It doesn't allow the city government to run wild unless the charter is wrong. We've heard some examples of cities where things have gone horribly off the rails. But actually, if we think about those cities, what's different about them isn't really their charters. Their charters were abused by a set of cities that were fundamentally corrupt to start with. The cities of Industry and Vernon, which between them they have 200 people living there, they are creatures of local companies. And the voters are all employees of the company. And the company has a tight relationship with the city manager. And the charter is simply a vehicle for the underlying corruption that exists in those places. There are also contract cities. They are cities that exist only as a shell and then rely on the county to treat their water and their sewage and provide their police protection and everything else. They exist only as a shell to serve their city manager and their city council. So, they are fundamentally, they are not West Sacramento. If you've been to Vernon or to Industry or even to Bell, and you drove, you spent five minutes there, you would see they are nothing like our community. They don't, they lack the vitality, the vibrancy, the diversity, the history, and the aspiration of our town. But charters have the ability, in very narrow ways, to give the city the ability to, one, protect ourselves in the future. We have suffered mightily from some one-size-fits-all policies that the state's undertaken, whether it's on grants or on redevelopment or on a variety of other topics. We have not emerged unscathed from the state continually adopting procedures and regulations which have been to the detriment of the people of our community. But a charter is not all-powerful either. It's not even close. That's the reason why we attached the, I attached the table that the League of Cities has produced that kind of describes the areas in which charters operate. And they're not, they cannot cover just anything. They can't override any state law. Charter cities have no additional powers for, the law's already been clear. General law cities have all the powers of taxation that charter cities have. So, there's no, it's not a new taxation. Charter cities don't have the ability to impose any additional fees that general law cities don't have. Most of today's charters, and I would certainly anticipate that we would, given our history of policies on these issues, have charter provisions that refer directly to state law on competitive bidding, public contracting, and prevailing wage. So, for most charters today, the voters of their communities simply don't adopt charters that don't have exactly the same protections or stronger protections on prevailing wage and competitive bidding than the underlying state law has. So, that's, it's not a function of charters to eliminate competitive bidding or prevailing wage. It's a function of the voters of the community making a decision about how, what provisions they specifically want. And a charter cannot just trump the whole election code either. We are, for example, we already have the authority to establish districts in the city. The charter doesn't create that authority. That exists in general law as well. And under general law, we have the authority to draw districts, but only if the voters approved it. And the same thing is true under the charter. So, I think that many of the concerns have been raised, which are not, they're legitimate concerns about charters, but they're really how you write a charter. They're not, they're not features of the existence of a charter in the first place. On the other hand, the charter, you know, us considering a charter does open up the possibility for us to inculcate the kind of innovative practices that we have been developing in our community around civic engagement, around democratic choice, value creation, the kinds of things that we've been identified as a leader around the state in, and really build them into our processes. Many processes that were created when the only way of communication was hope, hearing that by somebody coming from Woodland on horseback that something was being considered and therefore needed to be read three times out loud, full text, which is why we still do that in our meetings. We have third readings. And that's where that comes from. It comes from making sure that somehow people here in our community would hear that something was happening in Woodland at the County Board of Supervisors. And the only way we could be sure of that is if they read it three times out loud, the text of every single ordinance, they read it out loud. And hopefully, by horse, we would hear it at some point over those three months. That's not today's world. Most of those frameworks and procedures were created before the Civil Rights Act, before the communications technologies that we have, before the notions around what modern civic engagement and citizen involvement could really be like. So, I think we have some real possibilities in that domain. We also, I think, have an imperative under the California Voting Rights Act to consider the nature of our election system. And we do have a legal, you know, the law here and this why it's in this memo, you know, we need to analyze the empirical facts under the state's Voting Rights Act to determine, you know, our compliance with that act and the appropriate responses in the community. And the charter provides us with a mechanism to accomplish that and to implement whatever solutions, if appropriate and if required, under that analysis to proceed in that domain. And that's unavoidable. We have to, we are going to have to, you know, analyze those issues. So, I think there are some, there are some real possibilities here. There are some imperatives here as well. And I think all of the concerns are really questions about how a charter could potentially be framed. Agreeing to put it on our agenda and to schedule it for development, it's not an agreement that we're going to adopt a charter. It's simply that we have this, that we had this conversation. If we were to proceed in anything like the kind of schedule that was scoped out in the June 12th memo that I provided, obviously, it would have to be adapted now that it's not June 12th and we're already a month into it. But we could, as a committee at the whole, begin with, okay, what are the fundamentals of charters? And make sure that we and the whole community are starting to understand through that process what are the rules, the regulations, the contours, the design principles? What are the possibilities? What are the off-limits? What topics do we want not want on the table as a community in the development of charter? And then start to scope out what are the areas of opportunity. At any of those points, we could still decide, no, actually, now that we've looked at this, we don't want to proceed any further. It was an interesting concept, Mr. Mayor. But now that we've really dogged into this, there's really not much possibility there, and it's more hassle than it's worth. We would still have that option. Then spend some time, you know, in subcommittees and in community groups, working on specific topic areas. We might identify a handful of key priorities that we would address, looking at a charter, giving ourselves in the community the time to think through some of the topic areas before preparing a draft that we could then consider in the spring with the potential of being able to submit it to the voters next year. The reason the Folsom Charter is attached here is simply because it's an example of the kinds of charters that have been, Folsom adopted their charter in part because they wanted to be, they wanted to have a 21st century governance structure. It's not radically different from ours, but it is different in some key features. And also, Folsom wanted to protect itself from being otherwise incorporated into a city and county of Sacramento consolidation. They were trying to protect their very existence. And a charter was the only way that they could guarantee that state law and the county in which they sat could not swallow them up. And a charter was the only way for them to protect their territorial integrity and their long-term existence. But as you can see, the Folsom Charter does deal with competitive bidding and prevailing wage and limitations on salary setting by the council or the city manager, all of which can be put into a charter. In fact, they belong in a charter to make sure that the charter is an expression of the will and the control of the voters of the community in an underlying way. So, that's their request, is that we, the council agreed to let us at least consider this at the first stage as a potential development of the charter. And then determine as we proceed, if we do so, you know, whether to continue after those initial steps. So, under our typical Future Agenda Request, we don't have a robust debate about the substance of the topic, but simply, you know, a determination by the council is, you know, are you okay proceeding with this? This is essentially our gut check item. The actual content debate, if there is one, would only occur if we actually schedule it as an agenda item. Mr. Kristof?
There's a few issues that I think just sort of come to the surface, so to speak. And, you know, one of those would be, strong form of government would be a city manager form of government. I think we could write that into any kind of charter. I think you can talk about all of the labor laws and prevailing wage and all the other kinds of things to make sure that they're not things that get circumvented. I think we can do all that. And I think the biggest safeguard really is the fact that the people have to vote on it. And so, you know, that, to me, is a very important thing, that the people get the opportunity to vote on whether you want to become a charter city or not. And at the same time, they should be able to have a tremendous amount of influence so that you're really not changing the way of government, so to speak. So, I mean, I would go ahead and, whatever next step is necessary, I would go ahead and support that. Let's get the ball rolling. Let's get the issues out there. Let's have the community meetings. Let's talk to the public, see what they want, don't want, and then vote on it.
Other comments or is there any objection to proceeding?
There's no objection. I think that to Mr. Kristof's point, it is worthy of us reviewing. Appreciate you proposing it to us. It is a starting point for a community-wide discussion that we can have around this. So, I want to make sure that we do, we have that, where the public is well-informed, it's transparent, that we reach out to the community about what's important to us and how we're going to manage ourselves if we were to do this. So, I'm supportive of it, especially given my first five years on this council and the many struggles we've had as a city in a post-redevelopment world and where the legislature really, from everything they throw at us, us being able to, at least on this, on how we govern ourselves, have the ability to maybe write our own book, so to say, and how we want to do things. So, I'm supportive of starting the process here.
You know, there's one thing I do want to comment on. Somebody, I don't know who it was, that came up and they talked about diversity. I've been on this council since day one. And this is probably one of the most diverse councils in the entire region. This has been very diverse. We've had Latinos, we've had... We've had Latinos, we've had Filipinos, we've had Russians, we've had women. We, I mean, this is a very, very diverse council. And for people to say that it hasn't been, you're stretching the truth. Better think about what you say. Thank you.
May I say something?
No, sorry. Any other?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm open to discussion. I think as, as discussion unfolds, I really need to understand more about possible benefits and kind of, I guess, weighing cost-benefit analysis just to, to understand as we move forward and, of course, engage as, as colleagues have said, engaging community in the discussion.
I do want to emphasize, because Mr. Kristoff mentioned it briefly, but it's also in the memo that I wrote. The, the one area I think is, you know, is, is always a gigantic rat hole distraction from these processes is the strong mayor concept. And I, you know, I, to me, I'm absolutely interested in any, you know, a concept like that. This is not about that. I don't think that that should be in the scope of what we're dealing with. The, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not a city of a half a million people or a million people, and we're not going to be. So that particular element, I think, is, can, can tend to be too much of a, people worry about that. No one, I, I'm certainly not proposing that, and I'm not supportive of moving in that direction in any particular way either, so. All right, so we'll, we'll proceed to the next steps. Thank you very much. All right, we have no other requests. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, Mr. Kristoff motioned, Mr. Johansson seconds. Does the meeting be adjourned? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any foes? Your number, meeting is adjourned.